Call to order for Watertown City Council meeting for April 7th of 2025. Please rise while Councilman Shuddy leads us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you. We've just come this evening before you with just such Thanksgiving for the blessings that you have bestowed over this community over the, over the years, over the decades. Just those you have called to put in, in leadership over the years and governing authority, those in positions over the departments, even citizens that just take part in this community, Lord, that have made it to be what it is today. So tonight, as we gather together, there, again, there are citizens that have come together to help guide and steer the ship. There are, again, department heads, there's governing authority. Just give us all the wisdom and guidance to, to further this community in, in a way that brings you glory. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interim city manager, please call the roll.
Okay. Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Beeler?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Hollein?
Here.
Jerrance? Absent. Thank you.
Quorum is established. Chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Beeler?
Second.
Second by Councilman Shuddy. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to open forum. If there's someone here who would like to address the council on something not on the agenda, now is your time to do so.
Good evening. Doug Allen, 204 Lewis and Clark Trail. And I just want to make a couple of comments tonight, just some observations. And I know it's on the agenda and I'm looking forward to hearing the report from the committee assessing the, doing kind of a midterm assessment of the city manager form of government. I read it a couple of different times. It's chock full of good information, I think, a lot of information. And kudos to the committee, Kyle and the rest of the group that put that together. I think they did it in record time. And as I said, I look forward to hearing the report. Couple of observations about it from my perspective. There were a lot of questions about the city manager form of government, but there were also a lot of questions that were really more sort of personnel survey-like. How happy are you with your job? How happy are you with your compensation? How happy were you with the leadership of the city manager? Those kinds of things. And so I think we have kind of a little bit of a mix of, you know, information about the form of government, but also information with how people feel about it. And I think it's absolutely essential that we hear from the employees that work for the city. And I also think it's important that we hear from the council and how you feel about the form of government and how it's going. I think we'll be able to make some improvements. I think you've all alluded to that already, that you think you'll get some information from this that will help in the assessment going forward of not just the hiring of a new city manager, but the assessment of that role once it gets hired. And I think that's good. The one thing that I would add, sort of cautionary from my perspective, is that it was the citizens of the community that voted for the city manager form of government. And we're not really asking them how they think it's working. And I think there's just a caution there that I think the city, the citizens of the city believe that, that it's the right choice for the community. I mean, I think the vote at the time was over seventy-six percent in favor of it. I'm not sure that's changed. Maybe it has. I know the committee didn't really have the time or the means to assess that. But I think we need to keep in mind that it's ultimately the citizens who choose the form of government that we have in, in Watertown. So again, really kudos to the committee that put this together record time. I'm very interested in what they have to say about it and what their recommendations are. So thank you for the time. And again, kudos to the committee.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on something? I'll close open forum and we'll proceed to our first item of business, which is the Home Rule Charter Midterm Review Committee findings and recommendation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council and staff. My name is Kyle Alum and I had the opportunity to chair the Home Rule Charter's Midterm Review Commission. I would like to express my gratitude to our team, Jandberg, Dan Gabriel, Nate Graff, Alicia Hollein, Elliot Kanander, and Steve Thorson, who I believe are all present this evening. I would also extend my gratitude to you, Mr. Mayor, and the entire council, as well as the staff, for their willingness to allow us to pry deep into what is working and what is not working. And specifically, I would like to mention interim city manager Kristen Bobzian. Made our job extremely easy, opened her department head meetings up for us to come and asked pointed questions, allowed us to work through the, the technical departments that we could get information as far as emails is concerned. And really, our goal was to identify what was working well and what areas of improvement we can do, like Mr. Allen just noted. We did have a truncated timeline. We did not reach out to the public. And our, our intention is not to rewrite the Home Rule Charter because that is up for review again in 2028. But we did set out a goal on the onset of this was to review, again, like I said, what's working and what potential areas of improvement we could utilize and bring forward recommendations to improve the council manager form of government. We've also shared the findings with the hiring committee, so they are fully apprised of, of what information we gleaned. Again, they got the same truncated, redacted information that we shared with the council that's on agenda this evening. So the questionnaire rate, response, just so you know, hundred percent from council, so thank you for that, even though we didn't give you the option of filling it out or not filling it out. But I appreciate you letting us put the screws to you. We also got ninety-five percent response rate from department heads and managers, as well as a thirty percent response rate from the council, or from the staff itself, which is truly a testament to the rank and file employees that work for the, the city of Watertown. They truly care and are passionate about Watertown's long-term success. So for that, we give a lot of thanks to them as well. The, the questions were both what works well, what didn't work well, what problems do you have with council, what problems did you have with the transition. We also hosted in-person interviews with every single council person. Uncomfortable, I would say, would be a good adjective to use for the, for those in-person interviews. We also did meet with some individual staff that requested an in-person meeting, as well as members of the management team. And we also met with city manager from Brookings, Paul Brazino, and retired Chief Justice Dave Gilbertson with the South Dakota Supreme Court to garner their insight. And I also reached out to former city manager Amanda Mack, who was very gracious in allowing me the opportunity to ask her some very pointed questions. She had a lot of good things to say about the city council. Lot of, obviously, the individuals that sit behind that table have a lot of drive and passion to make Watertown better, and also shared some of her challenges that she, that she encountered while being Watertown's first city manager. So all of those, all of those responses, including Amanda's, Dave Gilbertson, Paul Brazino's, as well as the staffs, have been found and can be found and will be in our summary and findings this evening. The redacted findings from the department head and manager surveys, along with the staff questionnaire, are attached to tonight's council agenda. And that's open for the public to, to review. Would caveat that, that, you know, these findings are a summary of, of the questionnaire that were, were put out and are not a reflection specifically on the previous administration. I don't think that there's a business or industry that's out there where if you were to ask the rank and file employees to assess their supervisor or their ownership group, that would be completely satisfied, nor, but they're always going to find good things and they're always going to find things that, well, I would do it differently, but that's the way that business works. So please take the responses that you read out of the survey attachments to tonight's agenda with a grain of salt. There are many things that the previous administration were able to accomplish. First and foremost, I would think, trying to train the staff and council and navigate a completely new style of governance and operation really deserves kudos to that. This alone was seriously a strenuous task. There were also to bring forward the new ICE arena, the new city hall, streamline the budgeting project, process, address some of the much-needed residential zoning to allow for workforce and workforce housing, amongst other things. I would equate it to, I'm a movie guy, so I would equate it to when they brought in Gene Hackman in Housiers, right? He tries to implement a whole new system and the town's kind of up against it. And, you know, the old coaches are and the team is too. So kudos go out to that as well. But let's get into our findings here. Excuse me. So overall staffs, excuse me, staff satisfaction with their current positions between the extremely satisfied and, and satisfied itself, eighty-six point seven percent. So again, that goes back to the testament of the employees of the city of Watertown. They are here for us, for you, for the citizens of Watertown to make Watertown a better place. And would they like to see the city manager, or the, excuse me, the council manager form of government continue? Overwhelmingly, yes. Fifty percent said yes, absolutely. And the thirty-four point eight percent need more undecided, strictly because more time is needed for this to take effect and allow the process to work through. Then we functioned under a, kind of a triangle piece. We're going to talk about the power of three today. So when you look at this triangle that's presented here, you've got the council, city manager and department heads, all three of that triangle, all three sides of that triangle, it's all about information fluidity, right? Well, we're going to talk a lot about communication and about the three parts of that triangle working as a symbiotic being, right? Governing body gives direction to the city manager. City manager gives the direction to the council, department heads, and then back to council. All three points of that should be sharing information fluidly. When you set a directive as the governing body for the, the city manager to implement, allow that process to go through. City manager's going to direct the department heads to, to, to carry the water for whatever decisions or, or governance requirements that the council asks for. So that's the part that we will, will focus on going forward. Some of our immediate policy recommendations. I would, we would suggest creating a serious concerns hotline policy. This came directly from our friends in Brookings. This policy is designed to ensure accountability at all three levels of that triangle. Any reported concerns regarding the city manager are automatically directed to the mayor and human resources manager to ensure transparency. And conversely, if there's an issue with the mayor or a council person or something like that, that hotline is fielded. And that way, HR, city manager can address the situation as they arise. We would also establish a what to expect if elected document. And that goes back to that educational piece and that transition from a strong mayor form of government to a council manager form of governance. This is something that we feel would be important to be shared by the HR director to all potential candidates picking up a petition to run for elected office. Obviously, we're on a truncated timeline and tomorrow is the first day where candidates can pick up a petition to run for elected office for those wards that are available. So I'm not imagining that that's going to happen tomorrow, but they certainly could have it ready to go by the time the, the filings are due on May 5th. This, this document or this packet should include a copy of the city council code of ethics, which we'll get to in a little bit, a brief synopsis of the roles and responsibilities of elected officials, cover the governance process and anything else the council, HR, or interim city manager Bob Zian fill should apply. We also should establish a city council code of ethics, and I have shared that with the mayor and interim city manager Bob Zian for the council to review and implement. And that way, all council members should sign this prior to taking the oath of office, reinforcing their commitment to ethical governance. And lastly, our recommendation is this, and this, this is a resounding response from the survey, both from department heads and the, the rank and file employees to the city of Watertown, as well as some of our correspondence that we've had with, with other city managers, as well as my interview with previous city manager Mack. Our suggestion is that we adopt four meetings per month, two work sessions, two council sessions. Rationale behind that is, is while no action can be taken at the work session, it does allow council the opportunity to pose questions and staff the time to research the answers. Those answers could be, how does it affect policy or ordinance? Is there any potential legal ramifications? What's the cost analysis? Or how does it impact our budget? And et cetera. Having the governing body be more informed when the actionable items come forward at actual council meetings will in turn shorten council meetings. And I'm sure that you all love council Mondays, where you have to set aside two and a half to four and a half hours. But our feeling and stance is, is that if we're more informed and we come prepared for the actual agenda items that are actionable items, we can get everything accomplished in under an hour. And I've had multiple conversations with others, other council manager forms of governance, and that's how it goes. So while we're adding an additional meeting, the ultimate goal is, is instead of having a seven to nine hours of council meetings every month, you could have those be done in two, and your work sessions could be done in two or two and a half, right? Over the course of the full month. So that's, those are just our immediate policy recommendations. Recommendations for future, we strongly encourage hosting an orientation for newly elected council members. This meeting, new council members would be presented with the Home Rule Charter governing document with an explanation of their roles and responsibilities under the council manager form of government. Training on Robert's Rules of Order, review of the capital improvement projects, explanation of the annual budget, and priorities that were established under the previous year. We also want to discuss the potential ordinance and policy changes that are currently underway so that they can get up to speed. Obviously, when the elections happen, they're midway through the year. So some of that stuff is already underfoot and the budget's already been approved. And then we also want to get them under, up to speed on current year goals and priorities while also covering a five to ten-year plan. Because the, it's specific as to why the, the council elections are offset every two years, is so that you don't have a completely new governing body coming in every year or every election cycle, excuse me. So there's that constant, there's that continuity and institutional knowledge that passes through. So in fairness to these newly elected members of our governing body, it's kind of a crash course in where we've, where we've been, what we're working on, and where we're going. Secondly, we also recommend an annual team building and strategic planning session for the entire council, city manager, department heads and management team, in addition to key players throughout the community. Key players being members of the plan commission, First District, Watertown Development Company, head of the CVB, director of the chamber, et cetera, right? All of those people that are there, here's what we're working on. And the goal is to set a clear path of community goals, priorities, and possible ordinance changes that will further the future growth and sustainability of Watertown, right? You've got all of those ancillary groups working for a common goal, which is established by the governing body. We also want to encourage you guys to, the, the council and the city, excuse me, to bring in an outside entity, somebody from the municipal league or another authority on the Home Rule Charter communities to clarify roles and responsibilities as it relates to everyone's position as outlined under the Home Rule Charter governing document. Again, here's an opportunity to refresh Robert's Rules of Orders, which all of our meetings run under. They're the governing, the governing role that, that manages all of our meetings. And also at this meeting, members should discuss the previous year's goals and what they accomplished. Talk current year goals, what's our priorities, and then look at your five-year capital plan. Again, every year, that ball is moving. Stuff is going to show up that you didn't plan for, you didn't attest for. So anytime that you have the opportunity to have all your team players there in the, in the room, everybody's got a common goal and common vision. And that way, they, when they leave, they know where they're supposed to be going or what they're supposed to be working toward at the, at the behest of the governing body. We also suggest that the council and city manager review at minimum the budget on a quarterly basis. I don't know if you do that now. We didn't ask that question in the meetings, but we should be looking at least quarterly as far as what budget and actual expenses are in addition to income. I know that the sales tax revenues just came out, I believe for February. So we're, we're rolling into the middle of April. And so how does that impact our budget? Do we need to make cuts? Do we need to make adjustments? Do we need to push something out? Every time that you have the opportunity to review your actual versus budget and look at your income, it sets us up for better success long-term financially. And I don't think that there's a, a financial officer out there that wouldn't suggest the same thing. Obviously, they're looking at that. But when you guys are making governance decisions, it's always based on where are we at? What are our priorities? And can we afford it? And this would be a good suggestion for you to be able to do that. We also suggest doing meetings with a three-on-one. And that came directly from city manager Brazino from Brookings. He does a three-on-one with his council every week to discuss process, the progress on projects, policy, ordinance and goals. That way, it, it doesn't get under the rule of open meeting laws. And not that we're trying to not be transparent here, but I think communication is the biggest barrier in the, the adoption of the city governance form that we're under, under that council manager form of government. Because basically, your city manager works effectively as a COO, the right, the chief operating officer. So the governing body sets policy, goals and, and direction. And your, your, your city manager, in, in, in effect, implements those at your direction. The city attorney, CFO, human resources director, director, excuse me, while under the Home Rule Charter governing document, does say that they are overseen by the city manager, they're, they should be acting as a fiduciary to the city of Watertown. Their main priority and goal is to the betterment of the community and the taxpayers that fund their salaries. So when the CFO or the, the HR director or the city attorney is posed a question, they should be able to give the answer, how does it fiduciary, as a fiduciary, how does it affect Watertown and give you guys open and candid information? Council must give an annual performance evaluation to the city manager, and this should be initiated. Our, our opinion is, should be initiated by the human resources director. In addition to whatever document you, you decide to adopt under that performance evaluation piece, some of the information that we gathered from other city managers is, is hey, just tell me one thing I'm doing well and one thing you want me to work on. Okay? What can I do better? What am I doing great? Okay? Gives you the opportunity to address things in addition to whatever is on the truncated form that you're utilizing as a, a baseline for performance evaluation. to whatever is on the truncated form that you're utilizing as a, a baseline for performance evaluation. Obviously, if you get a new employee, there are many institutions and, and businesses out there that'll do a three-month or a six-month evaluation than a year. And so I will defer that to, to you as governing bodies, but we realize that, that there are and have been and could possibly be in the future a number of elected officials that have not managed people. So this is one of our recommendations to address that, right? That's why you leave it up to your HR person, because they've got a list of when reviews are due, annual increases and those types of things. So that's one of our, our, our suggestions as well. And, and based on what the Home Rule Charter governing document says, under responsibilities of the mayor, which will come up later, our suggestion is, is that the mayor should be a sitting member on the Watertown Development Company's Board of Directors. And then the deputy mayor, again, the governing document says that there's to be a mayor and a deputy mayor, but the deputy mayor should act as a council president. And that is done in the absence of the mayor. There, there's some questions as far as like, I mean, obviously, the governing document says that all of the governing members have an equal vote. Obviously, the mayor's got some defined responsibilities, but that, 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 that a deputy mayor should in fact act as a council president. So if you're going on those three-on-one interviews or, or meetings with your, your city manager, mayor can't be there. Obviously, we've got seven on our governing body. You should have either the mayor or the deputy mayor there so that there's no information that's lost in translation. So that that communication flow is unimpeded moving forward for the betterment and long-term success of our community. As it relates to council responsibilities under the Home Rule Charter document, this goes back to the presentation that was made in 2019 when the Home Rule Charter was revisited and the citizens overwhelmingly agreed to adopt the council manager form of government. So the council responsibilities include but are not limited to the oversight and of the city priorities and capital improvement projects as well as the budget and planning. That's why it's important to go back, review that on a quarterly basis. You can do it every two months. I don't, it doesn't matter to us. We just feel it's important to do that so that you've got a high-level grasp of where our expenses versus our income is, because obviously, our income comes on sales tax revenues. Establish policy, direction and vision for the city. Focus on community growth, strategic planning, land use development, approval and control of the budget and spending. Again, you approve the budget once a year. Are you doing that on a regular basis? We feel that if you have more information as you go throughout the year and you're understanding where the expenses are versus where our income is, whether it be shortfalls or overruns, you'll be better informed to make decisions as to can we escalate this project? Can we escalate our goal? Should we hold off another year? And again, it's all about that communication back and forth. Authorized contractual agreements, obviously. City manager can't sign any contracts without the governing body's approval. And you also have the power to hire, supervise and terminate the city manager. Again, that's a simple majority. That's your, your job. That's one of your roles as the governing body. And then again, giving the city manager, giving that manager their performance evaluation on a timeline that you deem necessary, if it's a new one at six months, annual, at least at minimum annually. They need to know where they're at, what they're doing well, what they're not doing well. Hopefully, the idea behind the three-on-one conversations and that open line of communication between the governing body, your city manager and your department heads and management team will alleviate any, they shouldn't be blown away or, or find anything that comes through in their performance evaluations as a surprise if you have low a common conversations. But again, council has absolutely no administrative duties. Mayor's responsibilities, again, this goes back to the presentation that was made in 2019. The mayor's responsibilities is to preside over council meetings with full voting rights, again, operating under Robert's Rules of Order. The mayor has the ability to set time, allow for council, you're going to have two minutes on this, five minutes, whatever it is, Robert's Rules of Order are applied. Develop and establish policy, direction and vision for the city, including economic development. That goes back to why we're recommending that the mayor should be a sitting member on the Board of Directors for the Watertown Development Company. Obviously, there's taxpayer dollars that go to help support the development company. They should be the conduit for information as to what the development company is doing so that they can bring that back and share that with the remaining balance of the governing body so that you guys, those entities can make educated decisions as to how to spend taxpayer dollars, or does it fit with what the governing body's goals are for this year, next year and beyond? Okay, they represent the city in intergovernmental relationships. They appoint citizens to advisory boards, committees and commissions. They present the annual state of the city address. They recognize as the head of government for all ceremonies. They're recognized as the head of government by the governor for purposes of martial law. But again, the mayor, along with the rest of the council, has zero administrative duties. That is the job of your, your duly hired city manager. City manager responsibilities certainly include but are not limited to the oversight and of the day-to-day operations of the city at the policy direction of mayor and council. They are the chief administrative officer for the city. They attend the council meetings, are allowed to give input, but certainly don't have a vote. They keep the council fully advised on the financial condition and future needs of the city. Hopefully, again, by having those open lines of communication, you're articulating what your goal for the future of Watertown's needs are, and they can articulate back where they're at, what kind of financial position you're in, which is reinforced by the fact that you're having a quarterly, hopefully a quarterly review of the financials. They appoint, manage and suspend all department heads, including attorney and city finance officer. This is left in there because under the previous form of government, when we have the strong mayor form of government, the attorney and the finance officer reported directly to the mayor and that, again, the, the, the Home Rule Charter governing body, or the, the, the commission in 2019 felt it was important for, for a streamlined process to have those two individuals report directly to the city manager. However, like I said in one of the previous slides, their fiduciary responsibility is to the taxpayers and citizens of the community. So whatever decisions the council is looking to make, is it legal? Yes or no? Can we financially afford it? Yes or no? And again, when you go back to that triangle, when you've got that constant flow of information, that information shared between all three points, none of that should be lost in translation. They were, are to direct and supervise all departments, offices and agencies. They prepare and submit the annual budget and capital programs for council approval. They also are to prepare and submit five-year capital and five-year financial plan for the council to approve annually. Submit all financial reports and administrative activities to council. Not so much that council can say, well, you can't do that, or you can't do this, or I want you to fire this person. It's more like, here's what our departments are doing. Here's where we're functioning. Here's what progress we've made on the direction that you've given us. And, and so that everybody knows that they're working for, toward the common goal. They sign all contracts on behalf of the, of the city with council approval. They ensure that all laws, ordinances and acts of council are fully executed. Whether they agree with them or not, the council manager form of government, citizens rule, governing body is elected, city manager implements the will of the governing body so long as it's legal and financially sound. Department heads implement whatever that is, okay? They're to provide staff support for the mayor and council and any other duties specified either by the charter or at the request of council. In the, in the survey, we asked all of the, the department heads and staff, what kind of qualities are you looking? This actually was a question that was given to our group because on behalf of the hiring committee, hiring committee had the intent of sending this out to staff and department heads. When, when we had reached out to them and let them know that we were going to share our findings and that we had already had a plan in place to implement a survey or a questionnaire, excuse me, to delve into what's working and what needs improvement. They asked us to include this in there so that we weren't over-innundating our already busy staff with a multitude of emails. So this is the information that came back on those surveys. And then we also have council policy recommendations. There's five of them. I have shared those recommendations. It's a code of conduct. It's, it's a governance. It talks about the, the council's fiduciary responsibility, how they are to conduct themselves, the interaction between them, department heads and, and, and city manager. I've shared, I've already shared that with Mayor Holene and with interim city manager Bob Zian. Our hope is, is that you will review that. That came directly from our friends in Brookings. That's been implemented for a number of years. It seems to work well. And, and our goal is for you to take our recommendations. You can take them for what they are, but I can tell you that our group, the Home Rule, Mid, Home Rule Charter midterm review commission is unified in our stance that we have a golden opportunity. We have got some of the most dedicated loyal employees out of any community in the state. We are fortunate to have a safe community with great educational opportunities. We've got a dedicated first responder course, and we, we know that Watertown is only going to advance and get better should these recommendations be adhered to or some variation thereof. Like I said at the onset of this meeting, it's difficult to be the first one. It's difficult to embrace your new role. Certainly, something new for Watertown, right? I mean, I've been here for almost 20 years, the first time that, that we have been under a council manager form of governance. But there is an opportunity for us to continue with the successes that we've been able to accomplish under the previous administration and usher in continued change going forward under our next city manager and under our next governing body. And with that, I'll defer for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Lalum. I think that there might be. I will open it up for council for questions. Councilman Danforth.
Surprise, Kyle.
I'm not shocked, but that's okay.
I, I went through the report that, that was included in the, the packet, today's agenda information, and a lot of good information in there. Needs to be discussed and understood in order to get to that point, but a couple of questions, or one question and one comment. On many of the questions asked where the answer was yes, no, true, false, there was large percentages that their answer was the option of neutral. In most cases, I wouldn't say in all cases, but in most cases, it comes back to us educating our body, meaning this body, our, and every, every staff from city manager down, right? On, on the Home Rule Charter and responsibilities, because there's only, there's only one reason why you would say it's neutral. It's because you're either, you're not understanding. If you disagree or agree, you're going to add that, right? So there's, appears to be a real educational element to the answers that you've gotten. So my, my one question I have in here is when oftentimes there, it's referred to as the leadership. Who is being referred to when it talks about the leadership within this report?
So there was a breakdown and, and the, the questions were very pointed. I would have to review the individual questions. Some of them were as it relates to leadership and the city manager desk. Some of them were referred to the governing body that's in there. Again, like I said at the beginning, this is a, a, a combination of answers from the survey, so we tried to truncate it down. I, I think it's a twofold deal. I can tell you from personal interviews and conversations that I've had with department heads, rank and file employees, things like that. I think there's the opportunity for both the governing body, the council and the city manager to clearly define their roles and articulate that message back to the staff. And that is why one of our main recommendations is, is to have a complete training on the Home Rule Charter hierarchy with the idea that all three points of that triangle are working for the same common goal, which is the betterment of the community. Some of the neutral comments that also came through, excuse me, was because some of it just had to do with the fact that we haven't had this form of government long enough for them to make an educated decision. It, it appeared that there was in some instances, you know, things worked well. There was some instances where things weren't working well, and a lot of it, I think, deals back with the communication, an open line of communication going forward. Or council gives a directive to the, the city manager, city manager gives directives to department heads and management team. Go work this path. Again, go to a council meeting, and then all of a sudden, you've got 10 to 25 people that come. Staff's been working on this for a month or six weeks. Comes to an action item, you get a bunch of people that show up, we don't want that. All of a sudden, all that work is lost. It creates inefficiencies and doesn't move or advance the ball. So I think that had some of it, some, some things to do with that neutrality piece that's in there too, I think. Just trying to read between the lines. Our goal are, with our group is to meet with you council members as a collective group and in a in, in a session where we can have a candid conversation. We can share some of the specifics because again, we truncated all of the answers. And our promise and commitment to the staff and department heads was to redact any information that would be identifiers so that they could give a true and transparent response to the questions that were there. So again, even in a, a separate meeting that we would have, and we're willing to host with you, we, we still would not give up that, that sensitive information and we, and we would, we would follow through with our commitment to making sure that they are, our identities are protected.
Yeah, and the one recommendation that, that was on, and I, and I don't know if it's currently in the Home Rule Charter or not. And maybe this is getting farther than we want to on this tonight. I'm not sure. But one of the, the items that was noted was that takes a simple majority of the council to hire or fire, terminate a, a city manager. Was there any discussion to make that a super majority versus just a simple majority?
Again, our priority and goal on the onset was not to address or rewrite the Home Rule Charter document. Our goal was simply to operate and bring forward recommendations under the current structure of the Home Rule Charter. So we did, our goal was, our, our mission, I guess I should say, was not to rewrite the Home Rule Charter. That's going to be coming up here in two short years. They'll, 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 you, you will, will start that process, the governing body will start that process in 2027. Again, if you are having open lines of communications, three-on-ones with your city manager and giving him a regimented performance evaluation, nothing should come as a surprise to the city manager or the governing body. So to answer your specific question, no, we did not look to change that because that wasn't under the guise of what we were formulated to do. So thank you for the question.
Councilman Shetty.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your, all of you, your work on this and, and your presentation. Very well done. More of a comment first before I have a question on the training. I guess I would, being three years into this myself, the training, I really appreciate your, your paying attention to that. Nugget of truth there is how we can move better to, to train new council members. Even existing ones here, maybe there could be some items here, we can take some training on the grow and then understand better. So I do appreciate your work on that. Also, the added work sessions, the three-on-ones, we did some of the three-on-ones in a couple of years. But, and we've even discussed added work sessions. I guess that boils down to, do you, do you have that debate and conversation at the, at the council meeting where you're making decisions? Which of course makes it a longer meeting then, or do you have that debate at, at a, at a work session? I could see the value of being at a work session. So then after we discuss and we share and we can, then we can go home and sleep on it and think on it, and it give us a little more time to work through the, the deciding factors versus. versus at a meeting. Granted, doesn't mean there's not conversations, phone calls, emails, whatever, to try to, you know, to research things ourselves, but there is a value in getting together, hearing, you know, another councilman's perspective, coming to these meetings, and then if we have time, like another week, to kind of work through that process. I could see it could be beneficial for the actual decision to be made at the meeting instead of, you know, having all that debate at the night of the decision. So I do appreciate your work, your thoughts on that, too. My question, I guess I would have, is two of the categories that were a larger part of the pie chart, I guess, was honest and then open-minded, I believe, if I read that correctly, and on the larger scale of it. And of course, there was the one that was other. But I guess my question would be, again, you could look at personality. I get that. We all have different quirks or different personalities, but with communication, you've mentioned that a couple of times tonight already, do you think that these communications, the way to improve communication would help steer us to where things are more open, more transparent, where there isn't maybe even, even if it is honest but doesn't appear to be honest? You know, will communication help this, help create an environment where people can trust that we're having, we're being open-minded and the honesty behind the city manager and the former government? I guess that's my question.
So let me just back up. So thank you for the comment and question, Dan. The other portion on that was simply done because there was a lot of one this, one that, one this, so we just truncated that in a pie chart into other. As it relates to your comments on the front end, when you go for work sessions, obviously, work sessions, there's no action items that are on there. But again, you're discussing policy or you're discussing a potential vote that's coming up. They're all published. They're all shared on the city's YouTube channel. It gives you the opportunity to ask questions of the specific department heads, whether it's street department or public works, well, not specific to those, but you can ask the city manager, "Hey, what about this? How does this affect that? How does it affect this?" And then when you're gathering that information, again, like if you did a work session and then you had a council, so let's say it's a work session where you've got something that's proposed, you got first reading at your first council meeting, then you've got two more weeks before an action item. Basically, in essence, you've got three weeks to gather the information that you want before you go to make an action item, whether it's an up-down, yes-no vote, right? Council always has the ability to postpone it for another two weeks if you don't have the information that you need to make an educated vote, right? If we don't have this information, city manager, ABC, can I get this from the finance department? How does this impact our financial stability? Obviously, if you're meeting on a quarterly basis and you've got somewhat of a level of understanding because our finance book is huge, right? How is it going to impact this? What impact would that have two years from now, five years from now? Or is it legal? Does it fit the ordinances? Or does the ordinance or whatever we're voting on match what our goal is for this year or next year, right? And then, lastly, on the part where you talk about the, you know, the explanation of why you're going to vote and being able to sleep on that, those open work sessions give you the opportunity to openly converse what your thought is, what your feeling is, and that's the beauty of governance, right? That's the beauty of a democratic system, right? The goal is, is that you've got seven people up there and you're not there to rubber stamp it, right? I mean, I can speak from experience that some of the council members that serve here and have served in the past, they're very much a detailed person, right? I need this. I need that. I can't answer this question without A, B, and C. But those work sessions give those individuals, those personalities, the time to get the answer to A, B, and C so that when it comes time for action items on the council agenda, if the leader of your council, which is the mayor, if he says, "Okay, we're going to operate under Robert's Rules of Order. We've worked through this at a council session. I'm going to allow for a two-minute, five-minute commentary," that's what you get. You move back. It's all about streamlining the process. The other thing that it allows is it allows staff the time to do the work and research so that they can report back to the city manager. That city manager reports back to the governing body. Here's how it's going to work. Here's the impact. Here's hopefully the answer to your question so that they're not spinning their wheels and doing work for two, four, six, eight, 10, 12 weeks, only to have a bunch of people come in on the final reading day and say, "Fill the chambers." Well, we don't like that. So, again, and that is kind of addressed in the council policy recommendations that we talk about or that we've made to the council. Because there's always the silent majority as well, and that's the thing that most governance doesn't really hear about, right? They always talk about the squeaky wheel gets the grease, right? What about all the people that don't show up and don't voice their opinion because they're okay with it, right? So those are the types of things that, hopefully, these recommendations and that open line of communication will allow to make Watertown prosper and hopefully minimize your council meetings. I hope I answered your question.
Counsel? Councilman Tupper.
Well, I remember the first four years on the council, and we did pretty much a steady work session every other week. I felt that was a great way of doing things. It just, like you say, it brings out the, it gets me prepared for the day when I'm ready to vote on something. You know, not only gives me the information, the information I don't feel I get, then I can reach out and get that information. So I do go along with that. As far as a, you know, looking at the financials on a more regular basis, where we're at, you know, what's the tax income or the sales tax income compared to the budgeted? I sit on a number of boards that every time we meet, we look at that. You know, where are we at with our budget, year-to-date, month-to-date? You know, I think that's a very, very important part of it, especially in today's economy. You know, we went a lot of years with nice double-digit growth, and now it's pretty flat, so.
Yeah, February wasn't too kind to Watertown.
No, it wasn't. It's alarming. So I would think that, I like that recommendation. Like I say, all the other boards I sit on, I mean, we look at, that's one of the big parts of the financials that we look at each and every month. So, you know, where are we at year-to-date, month-to-date? You know, this is what we planned on spending, but six months down the road, can we still plan on spending that? So I would love to go that way. So I thank you guys for all your work on that.
Well, just a comment to that, Randy, the budget is approved, it's typically, you know, hedged for best-case scenario, right? But if your sales revenues are down, just because it's approved via budget doesn't mean that it's a necessary, if it's not a necessary expenditure and your sales revenues are down, why would you approve a purchase? Or why would you approve A, B, or C? I mean, like if you're down 10, 15% in a normal business, right? You wouldn't approve something that wasn't absolutely necessary. I mean, like if a squad car goes down, obviously, I mean, we need, you know, officers patrolling the streets, or if you've got a fire engine that goes down or an ambulance or something like, hopefully, you're planning out far enough to where you're replacing those in advance, but, you know, life events happen and acts of God happen. So, you know, those are the types of things that if you are reviewing that on a regular basis, you can be nimble and agile enough to make expenditures here, but also say, "Hey, maybe I don't need to send, you know, this group to do this training, or maybe we can hold off on this, or maybe we can push this project off for another year." So, I mean, that's just the rationale behind that.
I will say that over the years, and I'm born and raised in Watertown, been here my whole life, and I've seen a lot of different finance officers. Watertown's always been lucky to have some of the best, you know, that do watch over our dollars. So, I mean, that makes me feel a lot better, but I like your idea of visiting it about every quarter.
Well, they win awards, but at the same time, I mean, they don't spend money unless you guys authorize it.
Yep, and that doesn't mean just because you're authorized that they always need to spend it either. So, I mean, when you got a time when things are tough, I mean, sometimes you got to make some of those tough decisions, so.
I know I have some things to say, but I don't want to. Councilman Peters? You might want to get yours in before I have a few questions. Okay, first off, I want to thank the entire committee for taking the time to delve into this. I know that you were given the task to look at the Home Rule Charter, but also upon how it was implemented and how we could be doing it better. So I want to thank you for that. Just want to make it clear to the public, I think I know the answer to this. I know it from my end. You were neither interfered with nor directed by any member of council or staff on any of this.
That is correct.
Okay, and when you mentioned redacting any information, council or staff knows nothing about what, I mean, staff members do not know anything what council said directly, nor does council know anything that any single staff member has said.
The two attachments that we put, that we asked to have attached to tonight's agenda is the only information that has been given to the council, department heads, or staff. Nobody outside of our group, actually, nobody outside of two persons, three persons within our group have seen the entire answers to all of the questions. The majority of the survey responses were truncated prior to sending out to our group, and thusly, everything that we shared with the hiring committee has also been redacted because I'm a person that feels that if I say I'm going to do something, I do it. And my commitment to the staff, department heads, management, and council was to glean as much information as we can, and the only way that we can do that is by allowing them to act and answer the questions freely and openly without fear of reprisal or the information getting out. So nobody, that's why the surveys were sent out anonymously. They went into a Dropbox where we were able to peel the information off. The only way that we knew who responded to the survey was if they physically put their name on the bottom of it, with the exception of council. So I hope that, and I, not hope, I appreciate the fact that we got the response rate that we did because our goal at the front end of this was 20%, and we got 30% from your rank and file employees in the city of Watertown because they knew they had the opportunity to say whatever they wanted, whether it was against the council, against the form of government, personal challenges, whatever it was, and it wouldn't come back to them. And again, like I said, this isn't the idea that we're out to lambast the previous administration. Obviously, there were things that worked well, but there were things that didn't work well, and I think the culpability is twofold. So, and our group is of the same opinion. I think I can speak for our group as it relates to that, right? Both sides need to function their roles and responsibilities correctly, and that's what we're here to help.
And thank you for that. And I just want to point that out for several different reasons, but one of it is the seriousness of which all of the staff and the council was willing to look at themselves and perhaps face some difficult questions and look at ourselves and say, "What could we be doing better?" And I want to thank, as you mentioned, the former city manager. She was great that she was willing to interview. Want to appreciate that very much because she was definitely had an insight that none of us had as well. So want to thank all of that. I love the budget suggestions. That's something that we will definitely follow through on. I did have a few questions. So you mentioned, there's been some talk about getting the numbers from the finance office and getting those information, getting that information. I know that there has been questions among council that, as far as, and you touched upon it, how can council be absolutely certain that we are getting the unvarnished truth from the finance officer and from the city attorney? Because in the end, those are the two people, we depend obviously upon the city manager, but we also have to depend upon the truthful, lawful, or the legal advice coming from our city attorney and also the financial advice coming from our finance director. So you touched upon how that needs to work. I just want to make sure, because there's been some on council, myself included, that have been wondering, do we need to carve out a niche either in ordinance or with an amendment on the Home Rule Charter to make sure that future councils are given that certainty that we are getting what we need?
So thank you for the question. We did ask that question when we interviewed retired Chief Justice Dave Gilbertson with the South Dakota Supreme Court and Paul Brizino with Brookings. The way that our governing document is written, they both report to the city manager but work on behalf of the city of Watertown. The recommendation or Chief Justice Gilbertson's response was, is if you put that into ordinance, it hinders the ability for them to function. And let me give you an example. When a council person goes to a committee meeting, whether it's the park and rec department or something like that as a liaison, anytime an elected official makes a comment at that meeting, the staff by default is automatically going to give more credence to it because of your position as an elected official. So the goal is not for council to give direction and give direction to the department heads that is supposed to be funneled through the city manager. Again, it goes back to that communication. So all three points, I mean, our suggestion is to put a communication Dropbox in that's private for the council, city manager, and department heads to openly and freely drop information. And here, the deputy mayor and two council members met with city manager, ABC, today. Here's what we discussed. Here's a policy thing that we talked about. I think it goes back to the training piece because if you look at the Home Rule Charter governing document and you were to take the city manager position and the chief financial officer position, and where it talks about the fact that they are, that in those two segments of the Home Rule Charter document, and I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but where it says that they are hired and supervised by the city manager, if you were to take the bottom section of that part of the Home Rule Charter and put it above those two positions, it would say that the city finance officer works as the chief financial officer for the city of Watertown to keep the, you know, the best foot forward for the financial stability, and the city attorney is to give legal advice on how decisions can be made that affect the city, and then that they report to the city manager underneath that. That would be a suggestion that I would make to the next group that goes to change the Home Rule Charter governing document. But the idea is, is that those two specific entities, their job is to work as a primary fiduciary responsibility is to the city of Watertown, the taxpayers of Watertown. So while they can be hired and fired by the city manager, their job and their information share how it financially impacts the city or how it legally impacts the city, it doesn't matter if they are, what the city manager decision is or what they feel, that's the fiduciary responsibility that they have, and they should give that information unabated. And that goes back to why we made the suggestion about the hotline, right, for reporting and things like that, because that way you've got the opportunity, "Hey, I don't feel like I can give this." It goes to HR or whatever. So policy and ordinance is a little bit sticky. My suggestion is, is to reach out to somebody from the municipal league or International City Managers Association or something like that. Share your governing document with them and ask that, those two specific questions of them, or you're more than welcome to reach out to retired Chief Justice Dave Gilbertson. He said now that he's retired, he's got plenty of time to answer whatever questions you may have, and he'll give you the legal premise on that, and we're happy to share that information should you decide to use it.
Okay, thank you. You suggested four meetings a month, two city council meetings, two work sessions. Doesn't matter when those are spaced out every week or, I mean, on some weeks, I think. That idea was actually proposed by the former administration, and it did not receive the support among the council at a work session when it was discussed, in part because of the scheduling conflicts of professions. But could that, could one of those meetings, like a work session, happen before a city council meeting?
I would imagine that so long as it meets open meeting laws, I will defer to your, you and your staff's schedules because that's not our right to say. It's just our suggestion.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. I also want to clarify something, and I didn't even think about this when I said I did not have this information prior. I know that the- I know that the WDC board is, exec board is in here. I was not aware that this was going to be suggested, that the mayor has a position on the WDC board. Why was that, why was that a suggestion of this committee?
Because if you look at the Home Rule Charter governing document, it says that the mayor's, let me back up, mayor's responsibility, bullet point two, right? Develop and establish policy and direction and vision for the city, including economic development. Spelled out right in the, right in the responsibilities of the mayor. There's nothing in the Home Rule governing document that says it needs to be the city manager. The city manager doesn't, excuse me, priority is to establish and implement the policy and economic development will of the governing body. So why would you have somebody, obviously, city manager can bring those recommendations forward. Here, here's something that we talked about in the development company. Here's something that's on the bike. But as a duly elected official and under the mayoral responsibilities, and if you're communicating with your department heads and it meets the goal and vision of the governing body, why wouldn't that, why wouldn't the mayor be on that position, in that position? I mean, obviously, there's conversations that are had there. A lot of that stuff happens in private. I understand that. I'm in development myself, right? But it gives you the opportunity to bring forward suggestions to the rest of your council, whether it be under executive session or under a work session or under open meeting, open meeting agenda items to say, hey, here's something that we should be looking at. Or when you're planning for one year, two years, five years, or 10 years down the plan, that should be integrated into the Watertown Development Company because that's what they do.
Okay, thank you. And part of why I was asking is, I've always been clear that I think that an elected official should at least be privy to some of the conversations at the WDC board. I'm not saying the exec board, I'm not saying anything, but I was just saying an ex officio position would at least make sense because eventually, every decision when it comes to money and zoning is going to come to us, and the city manager is just facilitating that, so.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to clarify that. One question that I did have is, when you were talking about the review of the performance of the city manager, and it should happen at least annually. One question that I had was, was there any discussion upon council talking about the city manager's performance on a more regular basis? Because we have a situation where we don't want to create these small groups of two or three council members talking about the city manager, and then the rest of us don't know what's happening. Because then it creates these divisions within council, not necessarily divisions, but just as far as divisions of opinion, but divisions of information, of information sharing. And I don't think it's necessarily fair to the city manager, and I don't think it's necessarily fair to the city council. Would there be a way, I mean, should council take an opportunity when we go into executive session to, you know, maybe as a group, talk about the city manager job performance on a more regular basis? I mean, I don't want to wait for a year to let a problem fester if we have a problem that is, that is obvious. But a problem that might be obvious to me is not necessarily obvious to all, so, and they might actually have a difference of opinion. So like, I would like to have that ability to share it with council in an open meeting or, you know, and I'm okay with it being in an open meeting, but then you have the situation where the information that you might be getting, that you're asking about, might not be completely valid, or there might be a second side to it, and you are talking about a person. So that's, I was just curious as to how we could perhaps be better as a council in handling the one employee that we have direct oversight of.
Well, thank you for the question. I think it's, I'm going to have a multi-point answer to that question. First and foremost is, is that it's your responsibility to establish whatever means of review, performance evaluation that you deem fit. I mean, if you've got a city manager, your sole employee that you have over, if they're new, I would certainly recommend, I mean, like in my business, outside of my other business, we do a 90-day, 180-day, and annual, and based on their performance, you can set up benchmarks and goals that they need to set. I understand that many that have served in the council position in the past, and those possibly coming in the future may not have had employees, right? You don't know how to do that, which is fine. But there needs to be some sort of evaluation process established at the onset based on performance. And then secondly, if you're having a three-on-one conversation, that's your open opportunity to have dialogue, hey, here's something that we want you to work on, or why hasn't this gotten done yet, right? I mean, anytime that you, anytime that I had an employee in front of me, I would always take the opportunity to thank you for doing this, and here's something that I want you to work on, if there was something that I needed them to work on, right? So I'm not telling you how to manage, but I am telling you that you need to set up a structure that is fair for both parties, okay? And if you allow the HR department to be integrated into that, they can set a reminder because you are all basically part-time leaders, right? So we all, you all have varying schedules, but they're the ones that are there to help keep the ship rolling down the road, you know, getting them out of the port and keeping it rolling. So I'm not going to tell you that you need to do it every two months. I don't, I'm not here to tell you that. I am telling you that there needs to be something set in stone, and that should be based on performance and how they function under whatever guidance you've given them.
All right, thank you. Councilman Peters?
Thank you, Mayor. How many people did you guys interview total? What was the total tally?
In person?
Everything, across the board, responses on the survey, everything.
I believe, let's see, we got all seven council, one less, one, how many department heads? I think there's 35 or 34. We got one less than that. And I think the responses for staff? We're looking.
Okay, well, just setting the table.
There's 200 and some employees, and we got 30% of that.
Of response, okay.
Yeah.
So what was the one thing that stood out to you guys? And you can speak for the whole committee, but what was the one thing that you guys took a hold and said, wow, this was surprising?
I would say two. There's two things, right? First thing is, is failure to understand the role or lack of understanding of the roles and responsibilities.
Of?
Governing body.
The council.
Of you, of council. And secondly, and probably most predominant, is communication between the three entities. There seemed to be a setup on the front end where communication was good and everybody was excited, and then it kind of waned. I'm not sure why. It's not my job to decipher that. But somewhere along the line, the communication failed. And anytime you've got a communication failure, it opens up the opportunity for bigger failures.
So that triangle you went to with the department heads, city council, city manager, that's suggesting department heads can go to the governing body, correct?
They should absolutely have the right to do that. I mean, you're the ones that are making the decisions. So long as the governing body isn't giving them directive on, here's what I need you to do. No, that goes through the city manager. But the lines of communication between those three points are critical to the long-term success of the community. And I think that's where there's that failure of the understanding of roles and responsibilities. And that's why one of our number one priorities was to have some sort of training mechanism for the existing council and, and probably even more importantly, is, is roles and responsibilities for those that are seeking office. Because when you step into that role as an elected official in the city of Watertown under the council manager form of government, your job isn't to give direction for staff, and you're not there to do the, you're supposed to bring forward a bold vision, plan, and goals for our community that are going to make us advance and be better, not there to come through and tell the finance office to do this and to, that comes through the budget process, right? So you absolutely have to have open lines of communication. Council should be able to go and ask, you know, the department head a question, they should be able to give that. Caveat to that is, is that you as a council person or that department head should be making sure that the city manager is in the loop on that. Hey, Councilman Peters stopped in my office today, asked me this question, here's the answer that I gave. CC'd, you're done. That way, because again, all directives are to go back through the city manager when you're talking about staff, because you have no oversight and you have no authority over the rank and file employees or department heads. That all comes out of the city manager's directives. And to answer your question, there was 90 employees that gave, it just came through.
Last question. This process we went through, do you guys foresee yourself doing this every so often? We had a natural, I think, opportunity here to, probably not. Look on your face.
I'll let you finish your question.
We had a natural opportunity here, but do you see yourself doing this every four months? I'm kidding. Four years, five years?
Our Home Rule governing documents right now is established for that there is to be a commission that is assigned by each of the elected officials to review our Home Rule Charter governing document every eight years. That was specifically put in there at the change in 2019. If the mayor or governing body decides that they need to have another midterm review commission or whatever title they want to put on it, I would defer that. I can tell you that the goal for us bringing forward these recommendations is so that you're a finely oiled machine and the next council is a finely oiled machine so that we do not have to come back and do this again. I can tell you that on behalf of the, myself and the other six individuals that were on this commission, every single one of them, and myself included, passionate about the city of Watertown, want long-term success for our community, and the only way that we can achieve that is if all three entities that are on our triangle are working for the betterment of our community. Because the council manager form of governance is the form of governance that will usher in long-term sustainable growth and prosperity for our community. So thank you for the question, and I'll defer until I'm called the next time.
I'll go to Councilman Beeler, but I see you have council manager instead of city manager at the bottom right.
It's city manager, I'm sorry.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, Kyle, thanks for all the good work you've done, all the work you did prior to this.
It was a team effort.
I'm getting to that. But what you did before as well with the Home Rule Charter, you've done an excellent job of communicating this to everyone, I think. And I know it's just been a tremendous amount of work I can see from everybody. And it is, it is really nice to have outside input. We've never really had that depth of outside input like we've had here. So, and I did read through this thoroughly to see what kind of information we had there. But also, thank you committee for all the good work that you've done. Just a couple of things, I would reinforce, because this hasn't been the case, I'd reinforce the fact that it's important for the council to be able to communicate with staff directly and vice versa. I think that's very, very important. And we kind of, in the past, we sort of got away, we were directed to get away from that to some degree. Also, I also would like to see in the future, the opportunity for council to be involved with capital projects. That's an area where we were kind of, we were asked maybe to isolate away when the dollars came in, when a lot of the work was done, the architecture, the engineering, then we would come in and look at it and say, okay, or basically sign the check. But I think it's very important to have some council involvement from the get-go. In the past, we'd have two or three council people involved in capital projects right from the get-go. I mean, that's when the architects, with the construction groups, all those people, I think that's very important for us moving forward, to have that opportunity. Also, the work session, I think, the work session thing, we've tried different ways of doing it in the past. And I'm not here to say, well, we did this before, it ain't going to work now, because it might. But in the past, we did do work sessions prior to the council meetings, and that's where we got into some really long council meetings. And everybody was so tired, I don't think they made great decisions towards the end of the evening. But I do think that it is important to have those work sessions. I think, in my opinion, it's as needed. I think the city manager can direct that, set an agenda for those work sessions with her staff. And I think that we've done that, so far we've been doing that, and I think it's worked out fairly well. And it does keep those meetings to a minimum. But the other thing I wanted to mention was, we did, in fact, have a six-month review, as maybe you are aware of, with the city manager from the onset. When we first hired the city manager, that was a part of it. We had staff member, we had, I think it was HR, the mayor, and two or, I think it was three council people, I was one of those people that was on that, in that group, to do that first six-month review. And then it was planned to do it out in the year. I thought that worked out very well, is to have that at the six-month interval. I thought that worked out well. But the only other thing that I have a question about is, I read in there several times about the eight-year review of Home Rule Charter. Were the recommendations for a different timeframe, like five years? Did we have, did I miss that somewhere? Or is that something that you were, that your group had discussed?
Well, thank you for the commentary and questions. The first part, the last question is, is the original Home Rule Charter prior to changing in 2019 allowed for the Home Rule Charter governing document to be reviewed every five years with each of the council person appointing two members from their ward to serve on that commission. In 2019, because, well, I can say it because I'm from Watertown. Watertown's very averse to change, and we figured that with this diabolical change in the form of governance, it would take a little bit of time, and by time, I mean a couple of election cycles, to allow the new form of governance to take effect. And that is why at the last or second to the last of our commission meetings, the recommendation was made and approved unanimously to change it from five years to eight years for the Home Rule Charter governing document review. There's obviously three or four different ways where that can happen outside of that eight-year window, but we operate under the Home Rule Charter governing document, and that is where we're at to date. As it relates to your question, as far as the capital improvement projects, I will tell you that your job as council is to establish a budget and then get out of the way. If they bring back capital improvement projects that have overruns and things like that, your job is to ask the questions, is there opportunities for us to save money? Why is it over the budget that we, the preliminary budget that we approved? And is there any way that we can do it without A, B, or C? But otherwise, that's not your job. Your job is to set forth the plan. Here's what we budget for this plan. Hopefully, working through the engineering department and with today's construction costs and things like that, you've got a relative idea as to where it's going to be. But that's not the way that it works, unfortunately. So that is a different mindset, and we specifically asked those questions when we did the interview process of other city managers and other entities when we were reviewing our Home Rule Charter document. It's difficult to change that. I mean, obviously, some of you have been involved in a lot of capital improvement projects, but I would also flip the script and say, you could have somebody on there that's never built anything larger than a shed in their backyard, and they're worthless when it sits there. And then when, as it relates to you being in those meetings, again, it goes back to my comment that I made when Mayor Holene was asking the question. When you make a comment, the staff by default is going to take it as rule or law. And then in effect, you are not functioning under the rules and governance, governing document that we have. So if you've got a project, we've approved 25 million, it comes in at 35 million, where do we shave $10 million? Finance officer, can we afford another $10 million? Do we need to push it out another year? What's the economic impact for pushing it out another year? What's the potential for, those are your questions that you can ask. But you're not there to say what color the window trims are and what kind of flooring goes in there and all that. Here's the budget, what can we get for this?
Follow-up, Councilman? All right, council, anything else? Councilman Danforth?
Yeah. Couple things. You know, the one thing, I think that's important, and I think the first time I heard this was in our discussion when I interviewed with your panel, your group. And that was the use of the word council manager, council manager form of government. We always relate to this as the city manager form of government. City manager is hired, not elected. I think the- I think the, the council manager title per se, whether it's informal or formal, really is a closer representation of who we are and how we should be acting. It, it clearly puts the responsibility of managing the direction of our city, not the administration of the city, but the direction of our city onto the elected officials. And that's the, the one thing that I've heard from people that, that have been, that is one thing, not the one thing. That's one thing I've heard from people in the, the public that have a concern with the city manager form of government. And as we talk through it, it's, in most cases, we kind of come to an understanding of what our role really is. But as managers, we need to understand and we need to accept that responsibility of management. Even though we only got one person, we have one person, but we got a whole entity that we are and in fact, managing with vision, with budget, et cetera. So I, I appreciate you guys using that term, because I do believe that it's important. It is a clearer vision to the public as to what our form of governance is. And we happen to have a city manager that handles the administrative side of things. So I appreciate that. I also believe, and you guys talked about it, and it's something that we're gonna have to figure out, and future council members and mayors are gonna have to figure out on how they do it. But I'm a firm believer that you manage by no surprises, right? And so with your employees, you, if there are issues and concerns, you address them. You don't wait for three months or six months or whatever it is, you address them. So everybody knows where that's at. Unfortunately, if you're a city manager, you've got seven bosses. And we are to work as a unified body. We may not always agree on things, but as a body, that's how we are to act. And now, this is contrary to, to, I think, Kyle, something that you said. The last thing I would want is that we meet individually or we meet three-on-ones and we give corrective action or direction to the city manager that the rest of the council is not aware of or in agreement with. I think the council has to be, we gotta act as that unit and have a method to be able to agree to what message is gonna be sent on a, on a performance basis and an overall direction basis to our city manager. I don't think, I don't think we've done a good job of that. I think it's been a little, uncertain how best to get there. Okay? But, but I don't think we can do it individually. I don't think we can do it on three-on-ones. I think that would be inappropriate for the body, as a body, to do that. So we've got some work to do there, I think, as a, as a managing council.
Yeah, and let me clarify, Mike. The three-on-one was more just to have open lines of communications with members of the governing body and the city manager. Obviously, you know, you're having conversations, where are we at with this, what's this project? So if I misspoke or led you to believe that there was to be corrective action taken on those three-on-one conversations, that was not my intent. It's the idea that we've got a free-flowing information happening between the governing body and the city manager itself. You are correct, that you do need to figure out a process as to how best manage your one individual under a 90 million, who is running a $90 million budget with 300 employees, right? And so, again, we're not here to tell you exactly what process to use, but I can tell you that there are processes out there for council manager forms of government to be able to enact and oversee their employee, what they have the right to do. And then as it relates to your first comment, when you're talking about council manager, we talked about this right away on the front end, right? We have a branding issue. We are a council manager form of government within the city of Watertown. And here's the hierarchy. The voters, the governing body or council, council and mayor, the city manager, the department heads and management team underneath them, and then your line, your rank and file employees. That is the structure for the council manager form of government. The citizens of Watertown elect you based on what your vision and policy and goals are for our community. You instill that and give your, your, your city manager the marching orders to implement your vision and goal as a collective group. They defer that information down to their department heads and managers, let them do their work, and then the rank and file employees go out and implement it. Because we have got some of the best employees that are out there. And it's, and it's evident in the number of responses that we got. 90 employees took time out of their day or weekend to respond to the survey. And that should tell you all you need to know.
Anything else, council? So I just want to say, well, first off, I find it a little ironic that at a meeting where you're telling us that we need city council meetings to be under an hour, we're at an hour and a half.
My 15, my 15 minutes is up?
But I think I'm going to choose to look at the positive on that as I try to. But no, I, I really think, if you take the joking aside, this meeting, this presentation is four years in the making, at the very least. And so to shortchange it is not something that we should do as an elected body, nor does I think the public want us to do. This has been a huge topic of conversation in the community for, obviously, four years now. They need to know that we are taking this seriously, that we are examining ourselves, examining our processes, examining how we want to make this a success. Because it's not, I mean, even for the people who might not prefer this form of government. What I'm asking is, do you like Watertown and do you want what's best for Watertown? Because in the end, that's all that matters. We're not necessarily making this form of government a success, we're making Watertown successful. That's the goal of this committee and everything else. So I want to thank all of you, and I'm gonna go by name. So Dan, Elliot, Leisha, Jan, Nate, Steve. I want to thank all of you. Council has appointed you, my pick, Kyle, you picked, you ran the initial Home Rule Charter Revision Committee. That's why I wanted you on there. And I knew that when I got you, I knew that we would get a good committee. But I also want to thank council, because there were some questions as far as what we were looking for in this. And I want to thank council for empowering the creation of this committee. And I hope the public sees, I hope the next city manager that we hire sees that this is not necessarily, this is us being committed to the long-term success of this community that we all love. So thank you very much for your service. We'll see you in four, four months when we reconvene. No. But no, seriously, thank you very much. And we will do our best to implement the changes. And I really like Councilman Danforth's suggestion. I think we're, just from now on, I'm just gonna do a blanket. We're gonna call it the council manager form of government, not city manager form of government. That is, that, it's a one change of nomenclature that probably should have been done years ago. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
If there's no objection from the council, I'm going to shift the order around. I see Ryan Heiser here. He's been waiting patiently to do his presentation on the Team Up, Team Up to Clean Up event. Do you have your microphone on?
There we go.
And just, just identify yourself for those who don't know.
I am Ryan Heiser. I'm a recreation coordinator for the Park and Rec. So we have our Team Up to Clean Up event coming up on, during the week of April 21st through the 26th. That is the week of Earth Day. And we, it's kind of that week that we do every year. You know, Park and Rec did it for many, many years. I think it was called the Litter Blitz. Took a couple of years off, and then we brought this back up in 2022. We take care of every park in town, all the bike trails, some of the ditches within the city limits. But for the most part, we get volunteers to go out and pick up all the garbage anywhere around town.
And how do people sign up for that? How do you coordinate it?
So they can contact me. They can email me at rheiser@watertownsd.us. They can give us a call at the, at the Park and Rec Fieldhouse at 605-882-6260. They can stop into the field house and talk to any one of us. Basically, we're just looking for, you know, volunteers, businesses, individuals. They tell me that they want to help volunteer. They give me a time and a day during that week or before. And then we designate a place for them to go to. And then we meet up with them and give them garbage bags or gloves or whatever equipment that they would need to do that job.
All right. Councilman Tupper?
Well, Ryan, first off, I want to thank you for that, for, for heading that up. Because it used to be a very successful program in Watertown. It was always kind of earmarked to get it done before graduation of LATI. You know, because people were coming from out of town, and what better way to, to show them our town and have a nice clean one? Like I say, I want to thank you guys for, for heading that up. And, and I don't want to direct anybody. I just want to make the suggestion is, maybe you could lean on Kelly Fritz for our public information officer to help you get that, that word out. And I think she'd do a good job for you. And thank you very much.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Heiser, for what you're spearheading on this. You mentioned parks, it was, is your first focus, was working with parks. You mentioned maybe some streets. I guess I'm curious on 212, Highway 212 coming in the town there. It seems like that's been a big collector of debris, if you will. And so I'm just curious if that's on the radar for, for this particular Team Up, Team Up to Clean Up? Or do we gotta come up with a different game plan for that?
You know, as far, as far as the, the highways going in and out of town, I would say outside of city limits, we've kind of stayed away from that. I know there's been other groups, for example, the Legion, the VFW has organized groups in the past to do those. One of the main ditch areas that we go through is along Highway 20, from the park shop just outside the zoo, out to City Park or out to Forestburg Park. And now with, kind of, I, I'm getting more volunteers than ever, and which is awesome. So one of the goals right now is to make it all the way around the lake with the new bike trail. There's gonna be more garbage along that stretch as well now with the construction last year and everything. So, yeah, I mean, as far as the Highway 212, we'll see, I guess.
You bet. Yeah, thank you. Because yeah, that's just something maybe not necessarily, hopefully, maybe you get enough volunteers that would work. But otherwise, yeah, we'll have to, as a city, maybe work through that. Because just in that whole stretch from the interstate into town is, there seems to be, unless we make it a council work session and we get our vets, if anyone wants to do that. Okay, sorry.
All right. Any further questions, comments? Councilman Tupper?
I bet you if you talk to the guy to the left of you there, he'd probably help you out, get that word out a little bit too there, so.
That's his right. That's his right.
Five locals.
All right. Any further questions, comments, council? All right, thank you. Well, yeah, thank you, Ryan. And good luck on that. We will now go to a, a presentation from the Watertown Development Company.
Good evening. Steve Laner with the WTC, I'm the current board chair. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come visit with you this evening about the work of the Watertown Development Company. Some quick introductions. Chris Clifton, who is our executive director with us. I have two other E-board members, Mark Dunn and Dustin Flattan, sitting in the back here. And Dave Straight's here to support us, and he keeps us out of trouble, or tries, anyway. Tonight, we'd like to visit about why the WDC exists and some of the priority efforts that are underway through our organization's 2024 to 2028 Girl Watertown 2.0 Plan. So why Watertown WDC exist? WDC is a combination of private and public investors in partnership to advance the economic and workforce vitality in the Watertown, into Watertown and its region. So not only the city, but in the region. Our goal is to support business activity, workforce development, community development efforts that make Watertown the place of choice to operate a business, work and live, and, and to invest in the future. By design, Watertown Development Company assumes risks that other organizations don't have the ability to take on. We do this in a spirit of taking chances on opportunities that grow jobs, increase productivity, and elevate the quality of life here in Watertown. As an investor group, we work to advance collectively what individuals and businesses can't do on their own. Even so, financial resources are finite, and the board has to prioritize where we put our energy in a way that offers a return to make future investments into our community. And as the needs of Watertown workforce and business communities change, Watertown Development Company has to adapt to help our investors in whatever is relevant at that time. So to that end, I'll turn it over to Chris Clifton to spend a little time walking through some of the priority projects and efforts currently underway.
I would like for you to take, take a moment, if you can, at some point in time, whether you have questions today or questions later on, to talk about this return on investment. We measure on a regular basis the return that we get from our investor pool. About half our investors are private sector investors. The other half is public sector investors, so it is truly a public-private partnership. And I would just point out probably a couple of key indicators on the investment side. For every dollar that City of Watertown is investing, you're investing about a half a million dollars a year, and you have for the last seven years, you're getting back $481,095 toward that each year, based upon the research that's done on a regular basis. So your return on investment overall, including our private sector investors that are putting in an initial half a million dollars a year, is about 563%. On the public sector side, for every dollar you invest, you're getting about $2.25 back in taxes. So I think those are good litmus reviews that, that need to be done on a regular basis and need to be judged as to part and parcel of what you're receiving and what you achieve every year. But this is truly a marathon. Next week, I will be here two years. I was invited to come in and, and be a part of this organization. I'm tickled to death to be here. I made a choice to be here. I could have been in many other places. I love Watertown. There is so much upside. I mean, today, this, at this council meeting, you saw one key ingredient that most communities never achieve, and that's the ability to govern itself and govern it collectively. That's one reason why Watertown punches above its weight when it comes to building new facilities and doing new development. Now, Steve mentioned that the purpose behind Watertown Development would, would go away if the private sector could step up and build new buildings, attract new investment, take dilapidated buildings downtown, buy them, renovate those, and invest in those. But that's not happening in this marketplace, somewhat because of the size. So in all cases, WDC plays a role on the real estate side and on the business development side, investing in things that aren't immediately gonna return a direct investment. So I think if I was a council member, the first question I would ask is, why do we do what we do? Why do we need a WDC? And I would be the first to tell you as a professional in this business for 40 years that if the private sector could do what we do, take the risk and have a return, you wouldn't need WDC. But just on the real estate side, let me give you an idea. We've got seven retail buildings that we own downtown, that were purchased, renovated with our investor dollars and backfilled with new tenants. All of those All of those tenants are below market. Some of those tenants are at twenty percent of what market rates are to get them backfilled into that space. So was it economically convenient or appropriate for WDC to do it? Five years ago, you had five holes in the ground in the community that needed to be filled. You had vacant buildings that needed new tenants. So this board took it upon itself to be in the real estate business. You're we're managing a thirty two million dollar real estate company, of which twenty eight million dollars of that thirty two million dollars is tied up in real estate assets. In order to do the things that we need to do and pivot and be agile in the future, we need to sell that, move out of those assets, bring in new landlords that are going to charge market rates and spend money on renovating buildings that we don't have the resources long term to do. That was the purpose that WDC played five years ago was to take those risks that no other private sector individual would do, backfill those, get the jobs and investment. That was also the case on the housing side. Your WDC invested in three facilities, four facilities for residential housing downtown, three of which are occupied and producing cash flow. One, the loft has been a a success in the conversion of office space, uh conversion of residential space to office space, and now they have six of nine tenants in that space that will be occupied within the next thirty days. Your WDC was an investor in that in a secondary market. So I tell you that the real estate side, our business development side, we're working nine prospects right now. Seven of those nine are expansions, existing companies wanting to expand. That's our job is to be the eyes and ears of your economic development program to bring in new investment, and that means you've got to meet with companies that are competing for that capital within their companies every day. That's what I do when I get up every morning is I think about who can I go call on that's competing for capital within their division, whether that's Krenlow or Terex or Cuda or whoever. That's the job that we do on a regular basis is how do we make that happen? And how do we do that with the collaborative partners that we have, both in the county, in the region, in the state and at the federal level? Finally, I I think there's an important leadership component to economic development. And it is inherent within the WDC that we have to communicate, overly communicate. I can tell you that this business, although confidentiality is very, very important, still can be a transparent process. And I think if we've done anything the last two years, it's to attempt to be a better communicator and involve more players in the process. Whether that's putting the mayor on WDC or having the council on a regular basis, one-on-one, two-on-two, three-on-three involved on a operational basis, we welcome that. It's our responsibility to engage you as well as the county and the region and the state. So I would tell you first and foremost, the recommendations that were made earlier today, honor what your what your charter tells you to do. We'll find a way to maintain the confidentiality. We'll find a way to do deals and still get deals done. But you owe it to the taxpayers and you owe it to yourselves to to request that we take that responsibility to communicate to you as much as we can. Now, we haven't done the best job of that in the past, but I can only claim responsibility for the last two years and for the next ten years. But I can tell you that we'll find a way to get it done. Finally, I, you know, the question behooves itself. What what's it going to take in the future to be successful? If you had told me fifteen years ago in this business that we would be dealing with early childhood education at the economic development level, not water sewer lines and roads and railroads, or that we were dealing with, how do you find developers and how do you encourage new development in residential housing, affordable residential housing, startup housing? I would have told you there are other divisions and other organizations that have a key responsibility in that area and it's not us. Well, we've all experienced a one percent growth rate the last fifteen years in this community. Overall, our infrastructure is designed for a two percent growth rate. We cannot sustain the economic engines that we have in this community with those kinds of numbers. I know ten companies today that are trying to hire a hundred people at twenty dollars an hour. Ten companies. I don't have to leave here and I don't have to go to Haiti or Sioux Falls. I can go down the street and call on them. What I don't have is a solution. I wish I had five million dollars in the bank and we create a fund and do low interest loans and encourage developers to buy new land and new development. That may be one of the options we have, but there's not a silver bullet. Our job is to be on the front lines to try to help facilitate what those strategic competitive advantages are going to be in the solution strategies that go with that. I think that's in the number top number priority when it comes to what we do on a regular basis, and that's bring that kind of leadership and be agile enough to pivot like we did five years ago when it came to investing twelve million dollars, which your WDC did on a secondary financing to get new residential housing facilities built downtown. So we're the risk taker. But our responsibilities are to communicate with you and our responsibilities are to engage you at every stage of that process. And I'm here to tell you that that's my number one priority. So if there's some something we can do to make those things better, we want to do that. Uh, we want to be involved with you on your strategic planning process. We want you to be at the table with us to be involved collectively at what we do as a region because we do have the county and the state and the regional players that are important. You know, the dollar bill really knows no geographic boundary and it knows no political boundary. So when you look at just your labor force, that heat map of where your labor force is is four counties and it's twenty five miles east, north, south, east, west on your major thoroughfares. That is the economic future of Watertown is how we build that workforce, how we sustain and keep that educational component. Thank God for LATC. Thank God for our middle schools and high schools. But we've got to find a way to get more warm bodies here to be involved with that to sustain and grow the companies we have today. Because the investment that I negotiate with ABC Company that wants to expand a hundred new jobs here today is telling me it's the number one priority. And they're telling me at the same time that they've got nine other plants in four other states around here that aren't performing as well as Watertown. So they're willing to take the risk to say, we'll put the investment in Watertown. We've got to have some help to find new bodies and new educational opportunities for the jobs that aren't being filled. That's the first and foremost plan. I've had council members tell me, we need a home run. We need to go off and recruit so-and-so and such and such. Folks, the jobs are here. The jobs are here. We've got to find a way to make it attractive for development to bring in new affordable housing and new jobs. And we've got to find a way to save jobs at the hospital that are losing jobs at thirty percent year over year, the last three or four years. That's an economic engine we can't afford not to replace. So I think our responsibility is to understand the big picture. We're not perfect. We are risk takers. We are going to be engaged in things that people are going to be able to look over our shoulders and question whether it makes a lot of sense or not. But I think with that, that's the role that separates a successful Watertown that's punching up above its weight versus a Watertown that just sustains a one or two percent growth rate based upon its infrastructure. So with that, I want to tell you how much I appreciate the the opportunity to be here. We've got a great staff. We have great leadership. We're making changes within our organization on a regular basis. We can't wait till you hire a new city manager. We love Kristen and the rest of the staff, but we got to, we all need, we all need the leadership on the field because we're in the middle of it and it's the fourth quarter and we want to win. So anything we can do in that regard, please let us know and I'll be happy to open up for questions.
Let's open it up for questions. Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I had a question I was going to ask, but then at the end of this, you kind of steered it a direction that helps me understand a little bit better. My question was going to be, you know, I was in sales for for many years in town. And so my thought is when you're in sales, there's of course taking care of your existing business. Um, part of my, the sales I was in, but there was also cold calls and getting new business in and and so when it comes to development, I got to believe there's that aspect, right? That element of 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 getting enough calls monthly or annually to to be able to draw more business in. However, just based off your presentation, one of our challenges isn't not as much as we'd like to see people come in the town is one of the challenges, the way it sounds, is getting the the people here to to work the jobs they currently have. So I I do appreciate you're paying attention to that. I don't know what the answer is. I'm sure there's others on this council yourself that that might have answers to that, but um, so I I get what you're saying there. Um, then, but does that affect bringing in new business? I guess what a question on that would be, I mean, is there like a you know, just from a sales perspective, uh, and monthly cold calls going to conventions, drawing business in, is that something that is still being done as a development company? Um, as well as trying to to get warm bodies here to help be be good employees? I guess that'd be my first question.
Yeah, of the nine prospects we currently are working, two of them are are not existing facilities here. One's a data center with edge computing that is looking at breaking out of Minnesota and putting a new facility somewhere in eastern um South Dakota. Thirty-five jobs. Um, I mean, we we found them at a a trade show that we attended several years ago and and uh over time, there there was a piece of legislation in this current South Dakota Legislative Group that was going to enhance the incentives for for data centers. That happened to fail, but that was one of the things that brought them in. So so, yes, they're they're still there. I I, you know, I I guess it's it's like in any sales arrangement, you know, that the you spend the most amount of time where you can close the most amount of deals and, you know, you're going to get eighty percent of your deals from twenty percent of your customers. So we have that eighty-twenty rule we live with, but that doesn't mean that we stop filling this spigot. Uh, but I can tell you the other side of this is that a company, twenty employees or two thousand employees, the first thing they do when they come to us is they say, hey, Chris, you know, we've run the numbers, we've looked at the opportunities, we know what the incentives are, we want to meet with your existing companies. We want to spend some time one-on-one with their HR people, with the plant manager. And I set those things up, put them behind closed doors, and I can tell you that's where the sales job is happening. That's where the rubber meets the road. It's not whether I can convince them this is a great place to be. I get paid to do that. But when they interview the plant manager at Krenlow and they say, hey, you know, we've got a hundred employee expansion right now and we're outperforming nine other divisions around five other states. We're going to put that sucker here, but yeah, we're having a hard time finding people. And we're we're going to have to pay them a buck more an hour. And I guess my point is, five years ago, you can sustain that because your average manufacturing wage was sixteen, seventeen dollars an hour. Today, that same manufacturing wage is twenty seven dollars an hour. Can it go to thirty, thirty-two? Do we sometimes appoint, lose the Terexes of the of the world in expansions or new opportunities? I mean, I think the world is changing. We're on sourcing and rightsizing is the thing to do, so we've got the trends working in our favor at an international and national basis. But we've got to find a way to bring the people here as well as to grow them. Because another thing that's happening in the trade side is that technology is moving at a tremendous rate. So the 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 day-to-day that I finish my TIG and MIG welding certificate and I go to work for Terex at twenty-five bucks an hour, Terex right now is spending money and time and resources thinking about the next piece of robotics that they invest in Watertown. So that means my MIG and TIG certificate is going to be worth close to zero unless I go back and get an industrial maintenance degree or get enough training to understand how to handle a CAD CNC machine shop tool and die operation by myself without a supervisor. But you're going to pay me thirty-five or forty-five dollars an hour to do that. And you're not going to hire fifty of them. You're going to hire twenty-five. So that that's the simultaneous change that is occurring on a constant basis that goes above and beyond, Dan, just the how do we get the next deal done and have we stopped recruiting the other ones? No, we haven't. But I can tell you the majority of people that we talked to, at least my experience here in South Dakota over the last two years, are companies that already have a relationship some way, shape or form with somebody else in the region. So, you know, we're we're selling the competitive advantage we have, but it's very important, much more so, to take care who we have first because they're selling the next deal.
Thank you. Follow-up.
Follow-up.
Thank, yeah, thank you for that.
Sure.
Information. So I didn't look at the sheet real closely because I always like to pay attention to what's being said. I can look at this later, so maybe it's on here, but is there, in measuring the, you know, the return on investment, for example, as you had mentioned, is there a way to measure directly, a direct impact on on what the WDC is doing or like when like the numbers that are on this particular sheet, are you are you comparing just the entire city that maybe the WDC didn't have any impact on?
No, we're just measuring projects that we had impact on. I I mean, can you can you measure the whole? Sure. I'm, you know, one of the things that I've talked to Dakota Resources about this, their state economist is building an econometric model here for Watertown or for for Cottington Watertown or for the region where we can actually use it to input and output cost benefit analysis. If you've got an econometric model, you can you can test anything on a piece of paper. You know, is it good to put a million dollars in that deal when you're only going to get X? Well, we're only measuring two or three little indices. Econometric model will do that. It's not a very expensive tool, but it's it's a tool that I think we need and would be nice to have for the county, the city, everybody to use on a regular basis because it can be used by anybody. But but no, I mean, this is direct impact. This is, you know, when when we did Century and Century said they were going to spend seven point nine million, they're building and land and all of their operations are worth sixteen and a half million dollars. Uh, they said they were going to hire ninety-five people. They're at one twenty-seven today. Their payroll was supposed to be twelve million. It's now sixteen million dollars. So, you you know, what we can do on a regular basis is go back and re-measure against our performance analysis because what we do as an organization is we ask every company to sign up and say, we're going to create X jobs, X payroll, X investment over X period of time, and that becomes a performance contract. And there's a clawback provision in there. So if Terex says, I'm going to save seven hundred jobs if you help me invest in this new site, and then three years later, they're laying people off, we can call a timeout and go, look, we the community invested a couple million dollars in land and infrastructure at this facility and you haven't performed its contract. And we do that with small deals. We we do that with people that we help by providing just a five thousand dollar match to to buy a home for the first time for key employees. We we ask them to commit to to being in that house as their primary residence for three years. Same thing with our with our our training components that we do with Lake Area Tech. We ask those students to commit three years to be here in order for us to fund a twenty-five hundred dollar match scholarship for a five thousand dollar scholarship for those. And I think that's the fiduciary responsibility we have in performance evaluations, and it's leading edge in in economic development. Many, many communities in this state and the region do not do performance contracts. And and we live by them, and I think we should. And we live by them even with the residential and commercial development. When they sign a lease and they say they're going to restore the facility or they're going to pay the rent, I mean, we, believe me, I spend time as a landlord. I I spend a lot of my time just collecting. I've been in several locations that have owed us a couple thousand dollars for the PPE loans and others that we've made uh and granted on the last couple of years, and I've gone in and asked for them to pay it back and they told me to pound sand. You know, it's just part of it. Um, but yeah, I mean, I I think the answer is you got to hold, you have to hold the community and you have to hold the the institution. You have to hold the prospect to what they're going to say they're going to do because that's the only way to be able to fiduciarily stand up here every time and say, you know, we want more money. We need a new partnership to finish Calvin. We've got five more million dollars we need to spend.
All right, thank you. Yeah.
Counsel, Councilman Danforth.
Gentlemen, I've actually had the luxury of speaking with both of you last week and and I appreciate your time last week and and I've learned a lot, but so it's one question that I know comes on a pretty regular basis, at least to this side. And that is, um, you know, I I know, you know, the support of our 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 existing businesses, primarily when I say that, it it's usually large commercial or it's it's industrial, meaning manufacturing. Is there an element within the WDC on the recruitment? Is there an element within the WDC on recruitment retention of retail? Is that part of your twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-eight?
No, you know, re- retail is a really, really hard, um, issue. I mean, because you got, you, the the job of any economic development organization should be to create those Blue Cross Blue Shield cards and to create that badge of employment so you got a job, so you're spending pro capita income and and that you're attracting jobs that are at pro capita income or higher. Hundred, we we target a hundred-and-twenty-five percent. We're we're seeing a hundred-and-fifty percent of pro capita in- income gains within the jobs that we're involved in in recruiting. So from that standpoint, the the logic is retail kind of somewhat takes care of itself because it's rooftop-driven and it's transportation and traffic-driven. And if we didn't have any retail sites, I mean, if I had, you know, ten Chick-fil-A's calling me every day saying, hey, we we can't buy a corner or this, that that corner's not available or there's no infrastructure, but we'd like to buy that corner, I'd be the first one in here telling you, hey, we need to find a way to do that. But I can tell you, there's a majority of brokerage and realtors and developers that have done a pretty good job. But I can also tell you that we've got hoteliers that are operating at thirty-five or forty percent of performance in a market where they should be at sixty or seventy percent occupancy rate. And and as I told you earlier, at a one percent growth rate and overall per capita income at one percent or two percent growth rate in population, you're not keeping up with the retail and you're seeing it in your collections. Now, what what can we do to impact that? Close on those new expansions, provide more jobs that have Blue Cross and Blue Shield and have a thirty-dollar, I mean, that's the that's the most important thing we can do. Now, I think there was a a point in time where we were lacking some opportunities downtown when it came to retail, and that was one of the reasons, I believe, that WDC five years ago decided to make a pivot and spend five or six million dollars buying existing buildings and and finding a place for Mama Max to go under market rates so she could have a thriving business and State Farm and and Elevate and other companies like that. But again, that you, the long-term strategy to to sustain that is to get them at market rates and to provide a landlord responsibility that's going to put money back into the facility. All we had was money to buy the hole in the ground or buy the dilapidated building, do the renovation and and track something under market to sustain that and to backfill that to bring in three hundred and some odd new residential units downtown that are buying goods and services on a regular basis because they don't live in the burbs somewhere. So that's a hard one. I I'll tell you another hard one that that couples with that, that we need to be able to pivot on. And one one of the reasons that my organization is trying to sell assets so we can generate cash and go into it, you know, wh- look at the last thirty or forty years, look at the max steals, where, who's recruiting the companies that are in John and Jane's garage on Northridge that could grow into a Rev or a Max Steel? I I mean, I see that as a significant gap, much more so than I do, how do we sustain retail? But how do we find a way to create those small businesses that haven't had an opportunity to incubate, that need the training and the resources through either incubation or a lower-cost place to shepherd that business until they launch off from the garage into the two-thousand-square-foot rental space that Century owns, you know, over by the dog park? Um, that's a missing ingredient here when you look at how how many tools in your economic development bag can you facilitate? Um, and and it's one that I've talked to our board about, but we just don't have the resources unless somebody's just going to write us a check. And and I think retail can be another one of those. But the the issue with retail, in my view, with my experience, has been it's all about retention and training. I mean, because those people are, you know, they're making seven to eleven dollars an hour. And and they don't want to go to manufacturing or they don't have the work skill sets to go to manufacturing. And daycare, early childhood education is taking thirty-five percent of that workforce away because if you don't make twelve bucks an hour, you you might as, you, the federal government provides a better opportunity for you to stay home. So so from that standpoint, I see those as the two opportunities to pivot to, um, in the future. But the retail side is, I think you just, you you got to land the jobs that are out there, create those payrolls, those Blue Cross Blue Shield cards and provide an opportunity for two-income families and find affordable housing for them to live into. Because if they're commuting twenty-five or thirty miles in that in that grand scheme of things, if there's another opportunity in Hayti or somewhere else to land that next job, they're gonna, they're gonna reverse commute, they're gonna, they're gonna stay there. And that's that's the challenge that we run is we're we're a regional economic center, but how long can we sustain that with with the interstate and the highway systems and our educational system?
Good, thank you.
Councilman Peters?
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight, guys. I got a few questions here. You mentioned resources. Uh, I think we can relate on this side of the bench to just, you know, cash is never enough. Uh, if you would, maybe just walk me through what the community's support for the WDC has been the last couple of years. Have you guys hit your goal, your fundraising goal? What is that goal? Um, is there an aspiration to get higher than that goal? Because I'm looking at this sheet here and, you know, um, I realize some of these numbers are out of ways, but certainly if you showed this to somebody, they might say, uh, it's a pretty good return on investment. So maybe just walk me through your fundraising goals.
Um, two years ago, we went into the second phase of Watertown two-point-oh. Four years before that, we had a Watertown one-point-oh. We raised four-point-one million on that four-year goal on one-point-oh. Uh, half from private sector, half from public sector. And 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 again, not, I'm not trying to be critical, but you, you, the government, our taxpayer dollars is pretty much flat the last seven years, okay? As far as total investment, even though we've had Watertown one-point-oh campaign that raised four million, and now we're in in the middle of Watertown two-point-oh to raise four-point-two million, and we've raised about three-point-two million. So we're about, we're about a million short. We have about forty-five private sector investors and that number should be ninety. To kind of give you an idea. And my view, the county should be a player in this economic development process. They've got as much as to gain as as the city does. And we've we've made a concerted effort to bring them to the table on deals and and I think we're seeing some positive results from that. And I think we should continue to do that. Whether they can ever get to the level that you all get, I I can't answer that, but I can tell you that if you never invite them, you're never going to get them to the table. And they have as much gain from all this, so I think they should be looking at how they invest their dollars in economic development to return back to the county as well, too. And then the state's been pretty good to us. I mean, we've been pretty, um, pretty welcoming when it comes to, you know, we'll pitch deals and we've only had a few that have said no, and most of those times, those are outside of our control. It's either the company didn't have the financials or whatever it may be. Um, but I would say from that standpoint, we also have to realize that the ARPA money of the world is gone and it's not coming back for any length of time. So we were going to find a way to sustain ourselves without having to go back to the well, thinking that that Uncle Sam's going to bail us out. We're fortunate enough to get that two-and-a-half million dollars for the toward the four-million-dollar sewer for for, uh, for a project at at Calvin, but there's still another two-and-a-half million dollars has to be spent at Calvin to finish that out. And you bought that property four years ago. You've got five-and-a-half million dollars already in that property. And you're not done. That goes back to that whole adage, why would, why does WDC exist? Because there isn't a Joy Nelson or a Kyle Peters or a Mark, Michael Danforth that would ever spend that kind of money without having some kind of return when you're selling it at or below cost for total development. So that's why we're doing it. We wouldn't have the Century project, we wouldn't have an opportunity for Max Steel to expand on that. We wouldn't have Razorback Two that could create a hundred-and-fifty jo- a hundred-and-fifty new jobs on that property and and invest almost fifteen million dollars that we're courting right now. It's an existing company here, Watertown, that wants to expand on that Calvin property. And we have one site left in Pheasant Ridge. But we do have three sites in Mallard Point, of which our organization is talking about, how do we pivot away from industrial office? Maybe we go back in and backfill with some townhomes.
On that note, I'm going to carry that. How many acres of land does the WDC have access to that's shovel-ready? I don't like the term.
Sixty-four, sixty-four acres.
In several different parcels?
Sixty-four acres at Calvin and about ten or twelve in whole at at Pheasant Ridge. There's a twenty-acre site, but there's some of it that's topo-challenged and is cut up a little bit. So, I mean, and and that park, remember, that useful life and that absorption, that that's a thirty-three-year investment. So, I mean, you know, it's at its end, end of life. And and that we have no sinking fund and there is no cash somewhere sitting around for us to go buy new land. And I can tell you, the new land around Calvin that will be served by the infrastructure that's there is coming on the market today at a buck a foot. So you're you're talking about having to buy land at fifty or sixty thousand dollars an acre just without the infrastructure. It's kind of like the mayor's earlier analysis of why do we put nine parking spaces in the old city hall when they're going to cost us forty thousand dollars apiece?
Councilman Peters, I I also, I also want to add to your first question, uh, about fundraising. We did add a position in the WDC as a investment relations, uh, person that that will foster those relationships, grow those number of investors and constantly fundraise. Um, you know, obviously, we're going to have to fundraise all the time, not just, not just on our runs at the ca- at the campaigns, the one-point-ohs, the two-point-ohs, we're going to have to constantly fundraise. So we did add that position to to take care of that that portion of of, uh, the business, so.
Thanks, Steve. Um, a couple more questions here. So, Chris, you mentioned ten companies are wanting to hire employees, um, but they can't find them. What instruments does the WDC have to help with that?
Uh, first, I think it it's, one, identifying the skillset shortages that are there within the workforce because a lot of times they they have, they can interview people, but they don't have the initial skillsets. The disconnect, I believe, and I'm, I don't want to speak for Tiffany because it's certainly her area of expertise, but the disconnect is, a lot of companies don't have to have a certified widget producer tomorrow. They'll take whoever it is that has the aptitude and then grow them as time goes on. That's that's a unique set of performance that typically is atypical to the LATC phenomena. You go in, you're there a year or two or whatever. Companies are coming in saying, I I need to have people now, I I need these six things and I have these four soft skills, and if you can help me get them there in four to six weeks, then I can get them on track to, and then they'll go back to other things that produce a certificate and the requirements to go with that. So I think Tiffany's doing an admirable job trying to shift and pivot to that, how do we meet those needs? So that's the first thing. Second thing is, we help them with relocation assistance. I mean, we we have a program that's set up for, um, a matching fifty-fifty toward first-time homebuyers in in what's called extremely difficult skillsets to hire. And that's true for not only manufacturing, we've done that in the medical field, we've done that in logistics and other areas. And we we've invested fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year for the last couple of years, each year, in that program. We 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 haven't been over overwhelmed because a lot of it is, they can't find a house. And and we don't have any program like that for rental assistance, so it's you either buy in a house, you qualify and the banks step up and they do half, company does a part of it and we do part of it. So that's that's one area. The, you know, the other is, you know, we're pitching deals to the state that have a significant relocation component today. And I'll give you, for example, the Razorback project that I mentioned earlier, existing company, want to hire a hundred-and-fifty people, brand-new production facility, new site, ten, twelve-acre site. They're going to make a new line of product. And what they've said is, you know, we're going to spend twenty million dollars. All we want you to do is, we've got about ten or twelve key middle managers from around our divisions, from Houston to LA or wherever, we're going to, we're going to make them an offer they can't refuse, we're going to bring them in. All we want is for the state not to just say, well, we'll help train them. They don't, those folks don't need any training. What what there's, what the company has said is, Chris, can you match the money that the state puts up just for relocation assistance? And we've said, sure. So on that project specifically, we committed in writing fifty-thousand-dollar grant for the first fifty people, um, that that hopefully this state will match. We'll have a hundred-thousand-dollar pool to help them bring their first set of middle managers in, which are critical components to the other hourly staff that they hire, so.
Question on that.
Sure.
Matching funding, um, like the fifty thousand dollars, does that come out of your budget?
Uh, yes, it'll come, it'll, it it's listed in in here as.
So in other words, you're not, you know, taking a loan out and passing that through?
Oh, no, no, no.
This is part of the, however, whatever your operating budget is annually, it's out of that, those dollars?
Right.
I think I'm good for now. Thank you.
Councilman?
I have a couple of questions. You answered one that I had on the industrial park. I was wondering how many sites were available and things like that. One question is on your handout. It has goals and outcomes by 2028. One is increase new housing inventory is one, and one is increase workforce and labor participation rate. I'm all for both of those. But what's what's the goal? How are you going to judge if that's a su- a success or not?
Well, a- a- as you know, because you were involved from the very beginning and, one, that's percolating the idea that we've got to bring our leadership together to figure out what the solution strategies are. So we did the housing summit, the initial housing summit. We participated early on in the little village component just because we had to start studying and realize what we need to do at the state level, hopefully at the federal level, to try to precipitate some kind of change with how early childhood and daycare is concerned. We we invested about ten thousand dollars in an initial research study on the child, early childhood side, and we've invested thirty thousand dollars in some analysis that's ongoing right now in the housing side. They come up with a whole litany of of best practices around the country on the whole issue of of affordable housing. And as you probably know, it, there's not a silver bullet, there's not, you know, a lot of communities that are trying to attack it on the front end is low-hanging fruit or just, they're getting through CRA and all their banks. You all put some money together, we'll raise it at next billion dollars, we're going to put a low-interest loan together, and we're going to go off and start loaning money at three percent below what market is as a stimulus. Does that work? Yes, to some extent it will, but part of our issue is, we've got an inventory of available housing sites with full entitlement and infrastructure to last us growing at two percent a year for ten years. And you're only building with the development community that you've got here, fifty homes a year, and a majority of those homes are three-hundred thousand dollars and higher. And the housing demand that we see in the initial research is one-seventy-five to two-fifty. Nobody's building in that marketplace. We've got some some costs that the community has invested in, in infrastructure with some of the residential real estates that is is uncaptured cost because the the marketplace through Watertown Municipal Utilities and others put put the money up front and the the pipes are in the ground, but there's no development. Nobody wants to take the risk during vertical. So, you know, I mean, all I can do today, Mayor, is to then help identify closely what some of the sub-issues are within that because there's skilled trades issues, there's cost issues. As you know, we we took a group two years ago to to Terre Haute, Indiana, on a project that a company in Georgia was going to build two-hundred-and-fifty units here of of rent-only products, single-family detached. And we found that the the delta between what they were building in Terre Haute, Indiana, and what they were going to build in Watertown was two-hundred-and-seventy-five bucks a square foot. And majority of that is skilled trades. It's not materials, it's not transportation. So there's a lot of indices that go into the whole housing component that that you're not going to be able to just, well, let's get a three percent loan out there and loan some money out because you're going to have some at-risk there and how do you, how do you regulate that? Who who gets the money? Who's qualified? Who doesn't? You know, it's complicated, but there are some solution strategies out there. And and I think spending the money, as we've done on the research, will help us hone in on what what's going to work in Watertown more than anything. And I think part of the, part of the solution, just off the cuff, is, you know, the city has a lot of real estate that they own that's not productive. Maybe we, like, like our three lots at Mallard Point, maybe we need to collectively get that inventory in here and sit down with a group of developers or like-minded people and say, how do we find a way to build some houses on those things? Because the infrastructure's already there. So, you know, I I I think the answer is, we, you you got to do the research, but then you 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 got to have some solution strategies, and we don't have them yet.
Councilman Peters?
Just to interject real quick on that point, Chris. So that, what you just said there about getting developers to the table, it's a great idea, I'm all about it. Um, you know, I won't give you my. You know, I won't give you my resume, but obviously you're aware that I'm in development and whatever. And I would say that the communities that I would say are moving forward are doing that. And so if we can help with that, we want to see it. Because, you know, just a comment I would make is, you know, the employees, it used to be when we went to a community to present a project, you'd say, hey, this is going to bring a hundred employees and everybody would clap and be really excited. And now they don't want to hear that. But they also want to make sure that there's more people coming into town consistently because by attrition, you're going to gain some of those employees.
Sure.
And so I heard a comment at the legislature this year. There was an economic development bill being debated on the floor and it was a perfect analogy. And the gentleman said, we have a tendency to focus on plugging the drain, not opening the spigot. And so we need to open the spigot to get people to come into town. Because I'd use the community of Mitchell, for example. A five hundred million dollar soybean plant got dropped in their backyard. They have, you know, two percent unemployment rate, but they didn't chase it out of town because they said this is good for agriculture, this is seventy jobs, that's going to bring a hundred and forty families to town. And we're going to be the beneficiaries of that. And I would say that it used to be the CEOs would get a little bit tricky to work with because they didn't want these people to come in because now you're paying a dollar extra across the street and you're stealing employees. But now they're saying, please, we'll pay a dollar because it means more bodies. So I guess I would just leave that comment out there that if we can help on opening the spigot, we want to do that.
Well, I can't tell you that it's a slippery slope in the sense that we do have a group of plant managers that are private equity, that have to compete for capital externally in the world. And they really don't have necessarily as much homegrown, how do we help Watertown that we can. But then there's a group of plant managers here that it is investment locally and they understand that. My concern is, three years ago, we were at a seventeen dollar an hour wage for assembly and manufacturing. And we're at twenty-seven today. How much can we sustain that before you do have the Terrex's of the world in this room saying, hold on? Because I have been there. I was in a community about this size, thirty-five thousand people, that landed a thousand employee operation and the plant managers all got together and showed up at council meeting six months later and went, can't do it. We're going to have to start laying people off because we can't afford to pay them. And so and so's just come into town and they're paying twenty bucks an hour, we're doing it at twelve. So there is a come to Jesus in the whole process. But I think that's the whole component about turning that spigot on is we got to find a way to attract new people here. And that's why our school system and our Lake Area Tech and our social fabric are so critical to our future success. We can fix the limitations on wastewater and roads and all that. But we've got excess capacity we're selling in schools.
Any follow up, Councilman? Oh, no worries. And I'm not going to, I don't want to nitpick anything that you have said, but I did want to ask one question. You used the comment earlier that we need to have all leadership at the table to figure out a solution. Who is the leadership?
Well.
But who all has to be at the table and willing to do their part to facilitate this growth?
Well, and when I say all, I mean, you know, I guess the point I want to stress in the comment of all the leadership is we need to have everyone in the community being the best cheerleader, this is the best damn place to live. And behind the leadership, whoever that is, whether that's the chamber or WDC or the council, behind that saying, yeah, we've got some blemishes and we're going to go work on those. But by gosh, we've got the best organization in the community and we're going to go land that deal. Or we're going to help that company grow here. We're going to find a solution to that. And I think when I say we've got to have the leadership, it's young and old. There's a gauntlet that needs to be passed down. You already see it with twenty fifty, you see it with your charter commission and with the evaluation for a new city manager. The world doesn't, isn't all going to look like Steve and I. It's looking differently because of age. So I'm saying there's a gauntlet that needs to be handed back to a younger group. So I think there's leadership that's not at the table within the younger community. And I mean, there should be leadership in the middle school and high school side to work on skills training. We should have a program that's teaching kids how to build houses. If we need houses, why don't we start building our sixth, seventh grader, building skill sets and teaching them how to do that? We've got the skills, training operations. We just have to find a way to get rid of the liability. So those are the little things. And that leadership is everybody. It's the county, it's the city, it's the state, it's our state delegation. We all ought to be at the table crafting what we want the future to look like. And I hope it's not two percent growth. Because sustain our medical systems in this community, just that one institution, it's going to take an eight to ten percent growth rate. Otherwise, we're going to lose it.
Well, then let me ask you a question on that. And that was touching upon my question where you have the goals of increased inventory, increased workforce. I'm more of one.
Let's go do it.
Outcast that vision. You want to make a pact, we're going to go for eight percent growth?
Absolutely.
Let's grab away. I mean, I'm saying, let's pick a number. I mean, how many houses do we need? And then let's say, this is how we are going to judge success or failure in Watertown by two hundred houses or two hundred facilities. Because then we have a goal, a hardcore goal.
Absolutely.
And then like everything else that's underneath that, the little things, the big things.
Absolutely.
We can figure that out. So I would say, if you want to cast that vision, let's cast that vision.
Let's pick a number. Let's go.
Yeah. And in regard to that, I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot now. You've done an admirable job of pointing out a lot of things that are wrong. And I applaud you. That's not a criticism because you have to understand what needs to change or what needs to improve. You have to understand what's going wrong in order to find a way to make it right. But one comment you said a long time ago was, we need to find a way to make development more attractive. Now, I'm not saying that that is only the department's job. But outside of money, I guess what I want to see is, outside of money, name me a couple of different things that we're already doing and name, more importantly, a couple of things that we can be doing. And by that, I mean, you offered the idea of Watertown has properties sitting around. I'll tell you right now, unless there is a reason that I find out that we can't do it, you have my pledge, we'll find a way. We can get that in the hands of developers, we can get that wherever.
Well, you know, I think.
See, that's an idea that I can get behind because it's a specific idea. It's not just, you know, we need more employees. We all know that. We need more housing. We all know that.
Yeah. No, I'm all for action. And I believe that some of the research will help point to some of the best practices that are out there. But you're exactly right. I mean, we just, we have an opportunity to shoot for the stars that most communities don't have. And we've already demonstrated we can punch above our weight. Let's just do it. Let's just, you know, even if we fall short fifty percent, we're better off than just sitting back with the status quo expecting new results from doing the same thing with the same amount of resources over and over. And that's where we're at, in my view.
The, and just so you know, I know that you've watched other council meetings. This is not me being critical of a housing study or a childcare study.
No.
That's fine. Information is good, but I think everyone has heard me over the last four years say that a study is only as good as the action that comes after it.
Absolutely.
And I am not a fan of hiring people to go tell us things that we already know.
With our watch.
Yeah.
What time it is.
So it's like, I mean, for me, that's, and granted, they can provide some insight that we don't know. But that's where I'm saying, let's, you know, let's put a stake in the ground and say, this is our future for Watertown. This is what, these are the numbers we pledged to hit. If you fall short, at least you've got a goal. I guess that's one of the questions that I, you know, and that is saying like, that is my pledge from the governing body to do what we can. And a lot of that, like you said, we can't, we don't have unlimited funds. And, but there are other ways that we can be creative. So if you need us to work on zoning, annexation, anything? Anything that we have power over, as we've told developers just at a meeting two months ago, I think it was, anything that you come forward that is a concrete thing that we can do, I pledge that it will have its day in court and a vote at city council.
Well, just one quick thing, and I think it's in all of our best interest. And, you know, we all have spent forty million on ice arena. And we spent ten million on this and twenty million and five million. You're issuing contracts here and there. One of the observations I've had is there's a tremendous amount of resources that are going outside this community from contractors that aren't here. So we haven't grown our own. That's a long term issue. The other is, ask those people to invest back in our community. I can, I know five contractors right now that the city has contracted with in the last year. I won't tell you how many millions of dollars it is. And we've approached all five of them about being involved in WDC and they've said, no. Now, I'm not saying you need to require it or, I'm just saying, again, that's that collective pool of we need everybody to be on the front line from the contracting office, city manager's office. Hey, you know, join WDC, put some money, invest in it. Join the chamber. Give some money to the community foundation. Be friends with God. It doesn't have to be us, but I'm just saying, I don't think that ask is being done on a regular basis for all of us as a team. And that's where I need help. I can't do it. I can't go raise a million dollars and still do the things that I've just outlined to you as being critical important. So that's where I think that there's some short term help. As Steve said, we got to raise money all the time. So limited resources, let's start asking some of these contractors and contracts that we're providing and others for parks and recreation, all of these things, you know, participate in the community. I don't care if they're in Sioux Falls. Stein Sein's got a new investment. They just put a ten thousand dollar investment, excuse me, a company just did a ten thousand dollar investment to the development authority in Sioux Falls. And it's great, I'm glad. I mean, Bob Munt called me and said, hey, Chris, really glad they're here, you know? But I haven't seen anybody that, from Deadwood, that's over here building something or doing something that has signed a check for ten thousand dollars a year toward Watertown two point O.
Councilman Tupper?
You know, this kind of reminds me of the presentation we just had. That took about an hour and a half. And what we did is we identified, and that's what their goal was with that committee, is identify our strengths and weaknesses and how can we get better? And that's basically what we're talking about here. You know, and this is going to sound a little brunt, but I'm just going to say it. There's three places that you just talked about that are in the same building that I don't think even communicate most of the time. And I'm just being brunt as a councilman and as a citizen of Watertown. Those are the things that have to change. And some changes I've seen over the last six, eight months was, or even a year maybe, is some communication with the county, with some partnerships on a few things, some communications with Watertown Municipal Utilities, with some partnerships on a few things. Those are the things that get me excited. They really are.
Absolutely.
And that's where we got to work on that communication part. Because I think we identified in that other presentation that there's a lack of communication. At the end of the day, you know, I got to go along with what the mayor said. At the end of the day, we need to know what our goals are. We all, whether it's your job or Steve, your job or any of these people's job, what we want is what's best for Watertown. And Watertown has been stagnant for a little too long. And we need to get out of that and identify that. You know, and there's been some issues that, I know in the past, there was some issues with the G O E D in Watertown. I believe those have been taken care of. I'm saying some things that probably a lot of people aren't aware of. But this is what we need to do. We need to set that goal. But we all need to work as a team, you know? WDC isn't that I, or Municipal Utilities isn't that I. It's all part of that team. And that's the part that we got to work together. But we've identified, same thing that every community in the state and probably across the country have identified, and that's daycare shortage, housing shortage, which creates workforce shortage. We got to identify what makes Watertown different. And we really got to work on that. So, you know, and I would totally go along with what the mayor said. Let's find that. Let's work on it as a team. You can't do it without us. We can't do it without you. Let's work on that and get that communication line going. Identify what those weaknesses are and start taking care of them. It's not going to happen overnight, but we need to start someplace, so.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. My goal is to make you break the record from earlier of an hour and a half. So. No, I have a question on this housing, just a brief question here. You know, I live in a home that was built in eighteen eighty, one of the first homes built in town. And the neighborhood I live in, there's many old homes. And so is there, I was driving down the road the other day and I just had a thought, probably a month or two ago. I was like, is there any kind of programs or ways to, yeah, we're looking at new development, but what about existing homes that are, and there's a lot of, I'm amazed how many homes out there that aren't that large. They're small, eight hundred square feet, a thousand, twelve, fifteen hundred square feet. That, is there a way to work something out where those can get bought renovated? Sometimes they get bought, they don't get renovated at all, they get used for rentals. And, you know, and that's not a bad industry at all. We need the rental side of it. But is there a way to, has it been done in other communities or other programs?
Absolutely.
Where you can take older homes and you can purchase them? Come up with some kind of a way to make it work for a home, for a developer or whomever to get it built up to where it's, I don't know, under that three hundred thousand dollar mark for sure, if you will. I just was curious what you've seen out there.
As a private developer and having managed entitlement in small cities, C D B G grants that did nothing but housing renovation in large and small markets, a million to fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand, I can tell you that the most important asset you've got is your existing housing stock. And right now, because of the economic conditions, the landlord is not incented to reinvest in that property because they can bump the rate a hundred dollars tomorrow and not have to put a dime of new carpet in. So, and time is killing you in that this nineteen thirty or fifty house that you're in, if you look at the overall age of your housing stock, small and large, it's getting older and older every year. And unless you reinvest in that, you're going to end up with some slums. And that's where most urban areas have created that donut effect out. So I will be a first and foremost to tell you, there's some great examples out there. Brandy probably knows many more examples, but my personal examples out there to where you need to start with a good inventory and then you need to create a community development program by which these individual homeowners and or landlords of multi facilities have an incentive because eighty-five percent of all your mortgages in South Dakota are at four percent. So nobody's going to go sell the unit and buy some more and then redo the mortgage at nine percent. So you got to find a way to create a fund by which your community development office can go out there and create little pockets and start with pocket A and pocket B. Can't do it community wide, but yeah, there's some great examples out there. And I think that's one of the places to start, along with the idea of how do we get some fringe properties within the community that are ready for annexation and that have some information available for infrastructure and that can be easily and more affordably developed. But remember that inventory you've got, you've got ten years of inventory already out there. But the problem is, it's all in that high end. So the other piece is you've got to start working on density. I don't care how you cut it, bottom line, it's all about density. You get an acre, put four houses on it, that's the person next door. I don't want twelve units next door to me, you know? And so you have to defeat the NIMBYs that occur. And especially if you're doing backfill projects where you have granny flats and others going in on a density basis. That's a hard thing for a community to cram down when you've got thousands and thousands of prairie land around here. So, but density is it. I mean, you either put more units per square foot of that water and sewer and road line and then maybe you start thinking about, do we need curb and gutter? I've seen some beautiful subdivisions in Phoenix and other places in the world that have open ditches, have no curb and gutter, don't even have a sidewalk to some places because nobody's using it. Or they realize they could cut, I mean, collectively, Dan, it's all of those things. The problem is, where do you do it and not get the pushback that you're going to get? if you introduce it and you introduce it next to Mike Lukin's development on Sixteenth Street when you got two units per three acres?
Counsel, anything else? All right, I thank you. I want to just say thank you to counsel. Thank you to everyone listening. Thank you to WDC for coming and presenting. I know, um, did run longer than what you had said. But I will just say to the people of Watertown that, and that includes every, everyone at WDC because you are people of Watertown. But I think, as I said at the midterm review committee, I'm okay when it takes a while to delve into some of these things because it just shows how important it is to the future of Watertown. And perhaps it has been too long in coming to have conversations like this, but you yourself said how communication is paramount, and I think that we need to follow through on that. We heard that at the midterm review committee. We heard it here. And it is easy for, to get in your own silos of people who you know and not factor in what everyone else is doing or trying to do, or the issues that they're facing. So I wanna just say thank you to everyone who went through these two long presentations. I gotta say, what you heard is economic development for the future of Watertown, and then earlier tonight, the governance of Watertown. Those are probably the two most important things we as a body deal with. So if we take three hours to deal with it, I think that people should just, instead of saying that it's too long, say we're doing it, we're giving it due diligence on that one. So, um, we're not gonna make it a policy of doing it every Monday, but, but like I said, I think it's long overdue. So thank you so much and coming. Uh, thank you to all the WDC board. Dustin and Steve and Mark back there and David. So thank you for coming. All right, now onto the agenda. Item nine A is an approval of a bid award for a two thousand twenty-five solid waste improvements weigh-scale project. We will go to our city engineer, Justin Peterson, for more information.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a bid award for the weigh-scale project, the landfill. The project includes adding a new scale, scale house and utilities. When the project's done, there'll be two scales in and out at the landfill. We received one bid from Timmons Construction in the amount of two thousand nine, two, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, and that's about a hundred thousand dollars under budget. So staff recommends award, and I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you, city engineer. Can I get a motion to approve the bid award? Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Let's open it up for counsel consideration. Councilman Peters? How much was it under bid here? Quick, Justin, I'll pull it up, but remind me.
It's a hundred thousand under budget. Uh, it was slightly over our estimate at twenty-one thousand.
Okay, all right, thanks. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah. Just to help me here a little bit, the, uh, at one point in here, it says that it was seven percent higher, but then down below, it says we're a hundred thousand dollars under budget. Explain that. Explain that scenario to me, please.
When the budgeting process took place, there, uh, we set aside four hundred thousand dollars for this project thinking that it might be that much. When we got design, uh, we came up with an estimate of about two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and the bid came in about twenty-one thousand higher than that, at just under three hundred thousand. If that makes sense.
I just ate a cookie, so. It was his fault. He gave the darn thing to me. But down in financial considerations, it says this project is a hundred thousand, sixty dollars under budget. So are you talking about the scale went over budget, but the project itself, all other things considered came under? But what are you referring to there? You, one's under budget, one's over budget?
I'm gonna jump in. I think part of it, I think when we're early on in the budget process, I think just the initial glance at the project was a budget of four hundred thousand. I think then, Justin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but then when it got time to actually look at doing the project and the engineers sat down and looked at it, is then when they came up with the two hundred and, what was it? Ninety-nine thousand dollar estimate from them. So I think it was a little bit of the timing. Their first initial glance at the project during the budget process was higher than when they really dug in to look at it.
I appreciate that, and I apologize for the cookie.
I thought the cookie accent kinda helped a little bit. Cheerio. Any, any further questions or comments, counsel? All right, hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay? Finance Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Um, unless counsel is going to disagree, I have someone sitting at the back of the room who's been waiting patiently for three hours to have a hearing on eleven B, the second reading and seven ordinance, which is the Commercial Lake District. And I think out of respect for him, I'm going to move that right now. So the next on the agenda is the second reading of the Commercial Lake District ordinance. So we are going to start by going to Brandy Hanton.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So we had the first reading at the March third city council meeting, and then the second reading didn't happen where we had it noticed for the March seventeenth just because we ended up changing the time of that meeting. So just to make that clear for the public, if they were tracking it, of why we're at this meeting here now on April seventh. But this is for the second reading for the CL district that the CL Steering Committee has been working on for an extended period, um, amount of time. And I'm gonna pull it up here too, just so I can show you guys. And as we discussed at the first reading, uh, we're creating three new districts, and then there is one existing CL district that will remain because we have three properties that are zoned CL today. So in efforts to create something that the council felt comfortable with going forward and to give it as an option for people to rezone, to have that mixed use at the lake, and this is only pertaining to Lake Compesca at this time. The original CL district did include Lake Pelican. But just because of the nature of, um, the development patterns of Compesca and Pelican, right now we're just touching on Pel, or, um, Compesca. So, look at this pulled up. We have the, see, um, the CL one is the Lake Commercial, the Lake Adjacent Commercial District. And then the CL two is the Lake Proximity Commercial District. And then we have a, um, the CLX is the Lake Commercial Overlay District. So we went that route because of having that overlay of the uses that are more intrusive to the nature of the lake as being ninety-four percent developed as residential. So that allows for you to have a bar tavern and the apartments, I believe. Let me, let me pull that up. It's been a moment. So the use of the bar tavern or hotel and motel. That is the overlay district that that can only be placed on top of the CL one or the CL two districts. And then those uses are, um, special permitted uses. So we created design standards or design criteria that had to be met to be able to, um, qualify, if you will, for the specific use. And then, so those are here of the lake retail and service establishments, restaurants, recreational uses, public and private, religious institution and mixed-use district. The only difference between the uses that are allowed in the CL one and the CL two is the recreational use for private. And then otherwise, there's the design standards that are included to offer protection for what the committee has proposed and Planning Commission has recommended are appropriate to secure the existing investments of properties that are within this district boundary. And that is also shown here on this map. So there's only specific areas that are allowed to even go through the rezone process of, um, being the, within the CL district for the CL one and the CL two. The CL one is shown in yellow on this map, and the CL two is the CLP, which is the, no, it's the CL two, which is the Lake Proximity District. And then you can see where there are the, um, teal-colored properties. Those are the existing CL districts, and there's also one up here. Okay, no, never mind. They're in orange. What is the, this is existing C two, yes. C two is local commercial. So with that, um, I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I will open a public hearing on this. I would invite anyone who is interested to come forward and testify on this present, on this amendment. I will, I will just, I will, I will tell you, I will, I will just say, we have Bob Drake in the back of the house. The reason why I'm going to acknowledge that you are here, even though you didn't come and testify, if I say your name at this point, then if someone does have a question for you later on, then it's just more appropriate as far as following the rules go. So, um, anybody else interested in testifying in this? I'll close the public hearing. I'll go into counsel action. Can I get a motion to approve the zoning text amendments? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Let's open it up for counsel consideration. Councilman Shuddy?
I appreciate all the work on this. We've went through this at work session, and, and so we've pretty much, I think, properly vetted this and, and all pretty much are in agreement for, for the work that's been done and to move forward. I, I had said at the work session, and I'm still in that position currently, I, I questioned the, I, I brought it up at the work session, if you have an R one or an R two, someone buys a home, and then we changed the ordinances for, for an R one or an R two, let's just say. They don't get grandfathered in. They, they still have to abide by the new rules. So I still question why we're still doing that for commercial lake property personally. Now, I believe it might look like that's, maybe that's, I'm not sure how big of a deal that is in a vote per se, but I still question that aspect. But one question I do have that I don't think was brought up at the, at the work session was, um, Compesca versus Pelican. Was that what you were referring to? Could you expound on that for a minute on this particular point?
Yep. And then if I actually could touch on your first point too, um, okay, but to touch on, as far as we're, we are looking at Compesca with these amendments at this point just because it has, Pelican is kind of maxed out on its development potential. So right now, everything's brought in. They utilized APUD for those acreages or rural residential district. But other way, the, the remainder is in the county, so it's not a, um, high priority to get that ironed out. Now, if something were to change, that would be something we'd probably wanna look into. Otherwise, it still would have the opportunity, um, to utilize other commercial districts that are available depending on where that was located. Um, and now remind me of what your first point was.
Sure, sure. The, um, existing commercial lake properties that are, don't have to abide by the new, the new ordinance change, which isn't, I don't think, normal in most development scenarios. So why is it the case on this one, I guess?
So we wanna make sure that we're not substantially changing something so that you're not limiting the options or the value to somebody's investment. And so that's where there's sensitivity as far as the uses that are available. And just as a reference, where even in discussion previously about our zoning districts and our conventional zoning districts, um, we did just do some ordinance amendments where we did increase the densities, but we would not change like the R one district. We wouldn't allow duplexes, or, we shouldn't. I mean, it just wouldn't be good practice. We shouldn't allow duplexes to be intermixed into that existing R one, single-family district because for one, it's the most protected, and it's also what people bought their properties with that investment. They invested in their property that was zoned R one with the backing that it was going to be single-family. So that's important to uphold as far as zoning goes. And I think as a community.
Counsel? All right, hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the zoning text amendments will say aye, opposed nay? Finance Officer, interim city manager Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Actually, and I apologize, I should've said something. I just wanna say thank you to the committee. Then that is, the committee leader was Councilman Jerns from that ward, Councilman Danforth, Councilman Peters. The staff help was invaluable. This has been a year and, a year coming, lots of meetings. So I say lots of work went into that. I respect that process. Thank you very much for going through that work.
Absolutely. And thank you also.
Also, we have another visitor here. So, um, we have Jesse Keel here, who was here for item twelve B. So again, unless counsel, problem, I'm gonna show respect for the people who came and spent their time who aren't paid to be up here. So I will move to item twelve B, which is an approval of a resolution authorizing the conveyance of real estate property located within the block four of East Acres addition to Watertown Development Company and authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a sanitary sewer utility easement agreement with Compesca Builders LLC. We'll go to our city attorney, Lisa Kiriko.
Thank you, Mayor. And Brandy, oh, you pulled it up. Excellent. Counsel, as you are aware, this is a piece of city property that was sought after by Jesse Keel of Compesca Builders, which is highlighted there in the teal color. The remaining city property to the south will be available for city use and available for perhaps future park and rec projects. But that three point oh eight acres is being requested by Compesca Builders through the WDC. The city will be conveying the land to the WDC to then facilitate the purchase by Compesca Builders. The plan is to develop contractor shops and/or storage facilities, which is consistent with other properties in the area. We are asking the city council to approve the conveyance to WDC and the purchase agreement. I would ask for a separate motion on the, um, sanitary sewer easement because that would be contingent upon closing of the, of real estate transaction by WDC and Compesca Builders. And then just for their, your information, the agreement also has a contingency because he will need to get a conditional use for building those on the property, and that will be coming up before the Board of Adjustment on Thursday. And with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Okay, thank you, city attorney. Uh, just a question for you. So if the city council is being asked, so I have two separate motions. One is a purchase agreement and one is an easement.
Correct.
Okay, and you're saying that with the easement, it's contingent upon the two things, the approval of conditional use and the closing?
Correct. Well, he can't close unless there's a conditional use. So we're only approving the purchase agreement, which has that condition in it. But the easement I wanted approved separately because it is a separate legal document that will get recorded, and that is contingent upon them closing.
Yeah, and I, what I was wondering is, I just want to make sure that I have the language right because this, as listed here, is one motion. But if we are going to do two, I want to know, I just wanna make sure that I, I can't, I don't, I don't wanna just say, "All those in favor of an easement," you know?
Sure.
It's like, I just wanna make sure that I've got the legal language right so that the motion is correct.
Right. So your first motion is to approve Resolution twenty-five twelve, authori, authorizing the conveyance of real estate property located within the block four, blah, blah, blah. That'd be an illegal term. And then authorizing the interim city manager to execute any documents related to that transaction.
Okay, enter into any documents. Enter into any documents related to that transaction.
And then the second motion will be to approve the sanitary sewer utility easement agreement with Compesca Builders LLC and authorizing the interim city manager to execute that as well.
Okay.
Upon closing of the transaction.
Okay, do we have that?
Yep.
I just want to make sure that we've got that. So I will, I don't need to open a public hearing, but if someone would like to testify on this, you sure can. No? All right. Close of public hearing. Can I get a motion to, we're going to do the first one first, which is the purse agreement, purchase agreement. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Any conversation on either a motion that we're going to be taking? Councilman Tupper.
And these are both have to do, he has to get the conditional use before it goes.
Correct, that he can't close on the transaction.
If he didn't get that, these votes would be null and void.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further consideration, questions, counsel? Okay, all those in favor of the purchase agreement will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bob Zine.
Okay. Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Let's open it up for any conversation, anything on the, on the easement. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, sorry, thank you, thank you. Councilman Peters will make that motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Tupper, thank you so much. Given that there was no questions on this, I feel confident in just doing a voice vote. All those in favor of the easement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right. Correct me if I'm missing something because I bounced around a little bit. We're going to go to 10A, first reading of an ordinance zoning text amendment to chapter 24 subdivision of land and the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown. Go to our city engineer, Justin Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first reading for Title 24. There's a handful of clarifying items, some municipal recommendations, and then a follow-up from the February 10th work session, which developers were here, had some discussion about development agreements and the timelines. The wording, to kind of summarize, the proposed wording, wording is based off the length of the right-of-way. If, if it's less than a half mile, a two-year development agreement seems to make sense based off of past history. Between a half mile and a mile of right-of-way, be a three-year. And then it's recommended that anything over a mile really can't be done in, in three years, so that, that would need approval from the city engineer if that was the case, but wouldn't be necessarily recommended. And then there is an opportunity to extend the development agreement by a year.
I guess with that, I'll stand by with, for questions. Thank you very much. This is just a first reading, so there's no motion necessary. I will start off with a question just to kickstart it, and I just want to make sure you had mentioned that this is coming from the discussion that we had with the developers that came to that meeting a couple of months ago. And based upon things that they thought could be done better.
Yes, this is specifically related to the length of time and how there's some discussion about whether they had enough time to do it within two years. And based off past histories, it's, it's really based on the amount of streets that they, it's part of the development. So that's what the wording's based off of.
Thank you. And I just wanted to point that out, I want to make a special point in pointing that out because even in our conversations earlier tonight on the different things, this council is about action. We just need to know what action to take. So when developers come, you know, when they did come and offer their suggestions, here's, here's the city, so I thank all the staff that made this possible, taking the steps that council and the developers said that we wanted to make it happen. I just want to show that to the community of Watertown, that's what we're about, but we can't, you know, we'll, we'll do, if it's a good idea and it's for the betterment of Watertown, we are open for that consideration. So I thank you for doing this based upon what we have heard back. So any further comments, counsel? All right. We'll see it back for a second reading. Item 11A is an application for a transfer of ownership of retail malt beverage wine license, video license, from River Card Casino and Westside Laundromat to Rodney Parent doing business as River Card Casino at the same location. Interim city manager Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, as identified, this will just be a transfer of ownership. Everything is in place, all fees have been paid and notice has been published. I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Can I get a motion to approve the transfer? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any conversations or questions, counsel? Hearing no questions or comments, I feel comfortable with the voice vote. All those in favor of approving the application of transfer of ownership, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. We're on to item 12A, an approval of a resolution for repeal or carryover of capital outlay appropriations for the 2024 fiscal year. Finance Officer Bob Zine. Call, go by finance officer when we're talking money.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, in front of the council is our capital carryover. This is allowed for with our home rule charter, so this is not for any operational budgets, but it's only for those identified as capital. Each year during this time, I reach out to the department heads and ask that if they have capital dollars that have either not been spent or that have been started but need to carry over into the next fiscal year, that they let me know of those. And that is what the council has presented, so this just takes that budget authority from 2024 and moves it into 2025 for tracking and then also to stay within compliance of our audit. So if there's any specific questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Questions or comments, counsel? Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want anybody to take any offense to any of these questions, I got two questions, but, but they're important to me. In this resolution, have any funds been diverted from one account to another, which changes its budgeted intent?
I would say that no funds have been transferred. During the budget process, there was two accounts that were never clearly defined and Dusty's here and he can actually speak to those. It would be the Park Master Plan account, which is where you'll see the park signage in Nelson Park, and then as well as where it's identified as Pelican View and River Ridge Parks. Those two kind of had a blanket budget given to them. So Dusty has identified those as the projects to facilitate the remaining of those dollars. Otherwise, everything else is specific to the original intent. Those two just never had fully identified projects to begin with.
So that was kind of a place marker, so to speak, for project and now it's been named?
Correct, and then this is the identification marker at this time.
Okay. Second question. Have we, as we look at this, it's really referenced to within the Kyle Alums presentation and discussion today, but has this been looked at, as we know now, as we're going to be sitting down here soon, that we've got capital, capital projects, demand for capital dollars? Have, have we looked at any of these that are not started or to determine whether we should continue with them or reallocate those capital dollars to other needs that might have a overall higher priority?
Okay. I will say that pretty much every one of these has either been started or, well, I guess, I guess I could say mostly they've been started. The only ones would be the two that I just mentioned. Otherwise, everything else is equipment that's been ordered. We did bring the Wolf exhibit, that was the one that Dusty and Stacy did come forward. That was one that I felt was necessary to kind of get the go-ahead before we bid it because it had not been started. Otherwise, most of this is equipment that has been ordered, just not delivered, or the project has been started and we're just waiting to wrap it up, except for the master plan and then that playground project.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. And I want to thank Councilman Danforth, that is an example of, I think, some of the more financial oversight that the midterm review is saying it's council's responsibility. So, thank you. Any further questions or comments? The motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please find out how we vote.
Okay. Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is an approval to allow a patrol officer to live .7 miles outside the 15-mile residency restriction. Chief Toomey, I apologize, I moved up other agenda items because people were here, but you're kind of obligated to stay here too.
Well, the standard has been set, so mine will only take about an hour and a half. Good evening, counsel, mayor. I've just come before you today, just asked for your permission to allow one of my newer officers to reside outside the 15-mile hour restriction. In 2020, a resolution was set requiring essential employees to live within 15 miles of the city measured from the airport terminal as a crow flies. He, it's a new officer, he's looking to establish his roots, he found a house that fits his financial need. It's less than a mile over that 15 mile an hour, or 15 mile distance, so I wholeheartedly support him in purchasing this home. He's a good employee, he's dedicated, it's not going to be any issue getting him to work.
Thank you. I will open a motion to approve, well, to allow the residency restrict, or to waive the residency restriction, I guess would be the motion. So, motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Open it up for questions or comments, counsel. Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, I guess, on what's the, the reasoning behind the mileage when we have set, for example, the, you know, a police officer, what's the reasoning behind that?
It's because of their job function and the ability to respond in a timely manner. If we have an emergency in Watertown or an overtime shortage, to get them in place in a timely manner.
Any further questions or comments, counsel? Yeah, it does, it makes sense, so thank you for doing that. And we do allow that flexibility in other areas as well, so just want to thank you, hope it works out great. How is staffing going?
It is great. We have one in the background in process, we have two outage standards and one still in training, but we're doing well.
Okay, great, thanks, chief.
Thanks.
The motion is to approve the allowance of waiving the residency restriction or providing flexibility, so all those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Interim city manager?
Okay. Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. Councilman Bu, Councilman Bueller?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have an announcement. I'd just like to, I have a prepared statement that I like to read. Mayor Hollein, fellow council members, constituents of Ward D and Ward D Councilman, for the, I've been Ward D Councilman for the last 14 years, and it's with heavy heart that I announce that I will be not seeking reelection. It has been my privilege to serve my community for the last 30-some years. I was afforded the opportunity to serve, to, to serve on the planning commission for 15 years, concurrently serving on the Board of Adjustments for eight years. To my constituents of Ward D, thank you for allowing me to be your voice, for concerns in our ward as well as your ideas to evolve and improve our community. To my fellow councilmen, we may not have agreed on every difficult or contentious issue, but it's been my privilege to stand shoulder to shoulder with you in matters that concern the betterment of Watertown. To all the employees of the City of Watertown, I enjoyed getting to know you and will miss working with you. Make no mistake, you are the backbone of Watertown. I hope to stay in touch. My mission and guiding principles of being your servant has left me with many great memories of being a part of our, of making our city of Watertown one of the best places to live and work in the nation. Thank you.
Before I open it up for the well-deserved kudos, I'm just going to lead everyone in just standing up and giving you a round of applause. I just want to, I am caught by surprise. I'm getting a little emotional simply because I, I know what it takes to be an elected official and to serve the public in this capacity, and I know how many times you must have suffered the slings and arrows of, of any decision that you have made, and I just, I mean, I was going through some stuff in my possession the other day and I saw something from the late 90s that had you listed as a member of the plan commission, so this is going back over 30 years and where you've been in pretty much continuous, I think continuous, public service, and it really is public service, and I thank you so much for what you've done. It's been a pleasure serving six years with you.
No, it has, it has been my absolute pleasure and you could not find a better staff that we've had over the years to work with. We've been very, very fortunate to have the caliber of people that we've had in place for that. You know, I worked with a lot of different council people and I, and I would say, most of them. And I will say, this group especially, I think, have been great. I mean it, I just, I've always enjoyed my association with you. So, yeah, it's, it was a difficult decision for me to make, but it's, it's the right decision at, at this time, I think, and it's probably good to get some new blood in this seat anyway, so, thank you all again.
Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just want to say thank you for your service, and it was four years ago in the parking lot of the event center after a forum, when, you know, we're running, you were running for reelection, I was running for reelection for the first time, and we were in the parking lot and you had mentioned that, yeah, you just felt like there was just some more to do yet, so you were going to run again, and, and I'm glad you did, appreciate it because you've been like a mentor to me the last four years, and in my first four years of being on the council, I've been able to, to glean off of, off of your, 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 your knowledge, your character, you, just how you carry yourself, so I appreciate that.
Councilman Tupper?
Well, I had the opportunity to talk to Bruce earlier today on the phone for 15, 20 minutes, and Henry reminisced a lot about the years of service that he's put in, and in a time that we've enjoyed together, I truly enjoyed it. At that time, he hadn't, didn't tell me yet what his decision was, but, you know, it takes a special individual like yourself to pour over 30 years in the public service, and, and they're few and far between. And like we talked on the phone earlier today, we, we haven't always agreed on everything, but when we, when we walk out that door, that's where it gets left. And the integrity that, that this whole council has showed toward each other is second to none. And yes, Watertown does have some of the best employees in the world, so it, it's truly been my pleasure to sit with you behind this desk, been a lot of hard decisions. I wish both you and your wife great retirement, be able to, and I still expect you to see it hot yoga once in a great while.
Oh, he didn't, he didn't announce his retirement, he just said that he's not going to run for reelection. But, I do, don't want to interrupt anyone. I also do want to say thanks to your wife and your family because the thing is, they also serve. So I do want to point that out. Any further comments? Bruce, we will miss you, and no better testimony than, did you leave something better than what you found it? And we'll wait to have you sing the, the National Anthem on the Fourth of July and see the troupe of Bueller at the ice arena.
I just had a knee replaced.
Yeah. I know Councilman Peters has an update for us on the succession planning committee.
I do, yep, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we've had some questions on where things are at with the city manager search. We skipped, we have a weekly meeting, we skipped it last week, so I'll just give a couple of updates here. Right now, Robert Half has a guy-
You should be by the fours.
I know Councilman Peters has an update for us on the succession planning committee.
I do. Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we've had some questions on where things are at with the city manager search. We skipped, we have a weekly meeting, we skipped it last week, so I'll just give a couple of updates here. Right now, Robert Half has got approximately 165 candidates that they've either reached out to or have resumes for of those. The initial interactions via phone or email have been over 45. Mark on the Robert Half team, well, the Robert Half team in general, has interviewed four candidates that they feel strongly about. They'll be presenting these four candidates to the search committee tomorrow on our weekly call, and then they'll be scheduling interviews with the, with Robert Half, with the candidates, and then with the, the committee that the mayor appointed. Of these four, I guess, strong backgrounds, they've got good leadership experience, all the things that we feel check the box. And then, after the first round of interviews, there'll be a, a chance for council to have the final interview. So, that is a quick update. Happy to answer any questions, or the mayor can certainly answer questions as well. But yeah, we should have a answer here soon.
I'd just say, I apologize for some of the information that we can't share, but simply because we don't know it ourselves right now. Both Councilman Peters and I reached out to the Robert Half group earlier today to ask them what the timeline was. I know that that's a big consideration for everybody. We're not exactly certain because there is going to be some questions, such as I asked earlier today, are they done, ask, find, trying to find more candidates to go through the initial process? And I was just waiting to hear back from that because if we're not done, we have four really good candidates that they feel great about, but I just want to make sure that their initial search is done before we try to winnow that down even more. And also, we need to set up a time for those interviews because they need to set them up, and then we're going to, actually, I think council's going to set our own policy. I mean, we will listen to Robert Half and the succession planning committee on what they suggest and on our process, but as I've stressed all along, we all know it is the council's decision ultimately to hire the city manager, and we are going to stick with that. I just don't know precisely when that's going to be. As I've always said, we want to do it fast enough to get this person in, but we want to go slow enough to make sure we're doing it right. Any further announcements? Any city manager report? No reason to go into executive session. I just want to say thank you to all of the council for the work that you put in tonight. It's good work, it's necessary work, and Watertown is better off for it. And again, just a special thank you to Councilman Beeler for all the work that he has put